All right. Good evening. The time is now six o'clock. And I would like to welcome everybody to the regular Galt City Council meeting for Tuesday, October the nineteenth of two thousand and twenty one. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public. Mr. Heinz?
Good evening, City Manager Lorenzo Heinz. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with Assembly Bill three, six, one. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that we are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter their webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or once when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. In addition, members of the public may use the call in feature also described on the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request, as we, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. In view of the direct video conference and call-in direct opportunities for public comment just described, email comments will not be read out loud during the meeting, but will be distributed to city council and made part of the official minutes and posted to the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papina?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. If everyone would please join us in a silent prayer followed by our flag salute. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, October twenty second at nine AM and Saturday, October twenty third at nine, nine AM. This meeting can be also be viewed at youtube.com forward slash metro cable fourteen.
All right. Thank you. I'll move on to item B, agenda approval additions and or deletions. Do I have anything from the council? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to item C, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussions or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted as noted via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by four o'clock PM on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out aloud.
All right. Thank you. So to remind everyone who's watching at home, we are not going to be reading public comment emails aloud. So again, if you have a public comment that has been emailed, we are given that and it will be posted in the minutes and in the official records, but we'll not be reading those. You will need to raise your hand. And when is appropriate time on the agenda item or during this public comment and we will call on you. Do we have any hands raised currently for public comment?
We do not have any hands raised online.
Okay. So this is the public comment period. Should you want to raise your hand and speak, you can do so on the Zoom if you are logged in. If you are on telephone, you can press star nine and raise your hand that way and we will call on you. I will give everyone a few more seconds here before we move on to allow for anybody to speak. All right. Do we have no public comment, Rose?
We have no hands raised.
Okay. We will move on to our next item then is D, presentations. Tonight we have the beautification committee annual report to the city council.
We have Gail Weber on the line. Gail, if you want to go ahead and unmute your microphone?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, Gail.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Gail Weber and I am the chair of the Galt Beautification Committee. It is my pleasure to present the council with the Beautification Committee Annual Report for fiscal year two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one. This report outlines the committee's responsibilities and activities. The beautification committee's mission is to enhance, restore and beautify the city of Galt by advocating a high standard of community involvement, cleanliness, maintenance and attractiveness. The purpose and function of the beautification committee is to act as an advisory committee to the city council and make recommendations on projects designed to maintain and improve the appearance of the public areas within the city. The committee was affected greatly this fiscal year by COVID and did not get a chance to meet as a group until February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one. With the remainder of the fiscal year, the committee was excited to jump back into planning road cleanups. The committee also started a new way for the community to get involved with nominate your neighbor by creating a new email that anyone could submit nominations to. I would like to thank my fellow current committee members for their efforts, Paige Lamson, Amy Sandu, Darlene Brown and Mara Firestone. That concludes the beautification committee report to council. I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve the community and to provide this report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gail, and thank you to the beautification committee for all that you guys do. You know that beautification is a, a big personal priority for myself, and so I thank you for what you guys do and happy you guys are back in action. Does any of the council have any comment or questions for Gail?
Mr. Mayor, I just want, I, I just only would like to thank you for Gail Weber's service in this committee and all other some committees yet. Thank you for the service and other committee members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you for the report, Gail, and keep us briefed on anything that beautification is going to be doing that we can be a part of. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any public comment on this particular item?
We have one hand raised.
Okay.
Ryan Montgomery.
Go ahead, Ryan. I mute your microphone.
I think I need to be, it's my mistake. I should have raised my hand during the city manager update. The COVID nineteen update, that's when I want to speak.
Okay, that's fine, sir. All right. If we have no other public comment, again, if you wish to comment, you can press star nine if you're on the phone or you can raise your hand on the Zoom webinar.
And there are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you, Rose. We will then move on to item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. We will start with Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu. Go ahead.
Nothing to report this day.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papinao?
I don't have anything to report this week.
All right. Councilmember Vandenberg?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Lozano?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. I thought I had something, maybe I'm thinking of something that wasn't official. I don't have anything to report either. So we will move on to item F, information consent calendar. I would like to announce that if you do want to comment on any of the consent items, please raise your hand. I am officially opening that public comment period right now. And you can press star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. So it is recommended that items one through four be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. Item one of the consent calendar is going to be the minutes of the regular meeting from October the fifth, two thousand and twenty one. Item two is going to be receive and file warrants for a period ending October sixth of two thousand and twenty one. Item three is the first amendment to the agreement with Sacramento County for South County Transit Link, SCT slash link, sharing of responsibilities and cost. And item four is going to be the reappointment to Sacramento Environmental Commission, Mr. Thomas Molson. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move. Second.
Actually, before I do that, I'm sorry. Do we have public comment on this item?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. I need to wait a few seconds for anyone should they want to comment. I apologize for that. Public comment is open. If you'd like to raise your hand, please do so now. Do we have any hands raised online, Rose?
We currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay. Now can I please have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinao?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar approved five zero. We will now move on to our next item G, scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening, Tina?
And this evening.
Okay. We will now move on to our regular calendar item H from the city manager's office. Our first item is going to be our coronavirus COVID nineteen update. Mr. Heinz?
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone see my PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
All righty, very good. This is the COVID nineteen update for October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one. As you can see, the cases and we track for those folks who haven't seen this before, we track the cases both at the county level and at the city level. The number of cases in Sacramento County has grown by two percent or thirty or a little over three thousand. The number of deaths in Sacramento County is up four percent or eighty-two individuals. The number of cases here within the city of Galt has gone up eighty by eighty-one or two percent. And the number of deaths here in the city of Galt has increased by two or four percent. Sacramento County Public Health, the daily case rate is currently at fourteen point one per one hundred thousand, and that's down from fifteen point nine per one hundred thousand when we had our prior council meeting. Area hospitals currently have a hundred and eighty-five COVID hospitalizations, and that's down from two thirty-two after our last council meeting. Less than five of those hospitalized are pediatric patients, which is down from the October fifth number as well. COVID nineteen testing is now offered every Thursday, Friday and Saturday in Galt at the Jabola Center and at the Parks and Recreation Offices. Testing details are only available for the Thursday test site. On Thursday, October fourteenth, we had a hundred and sixty-nine tests administered compared to twenty, two hundred and ten on October seventh. So the information regarding COVID nineteen testing sites in Galt can be found at our website and our social media pages. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation for this week.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment on this particular item? Any hands raised?
We do. We have Mr. Ryan Montgomery.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Give him just a second. Ryan, go ahead and unmute.
Okay, yeah. So what I'm going to be talking about is a speech I've written, and it's basically, it kind of ties into a a Parks and Rec situation with the youth basketball league. So here it goes. Dear members of the city council, I come before you today to speak regarding the mask policy being implemented by Parks and Rec for their youth basketball league. Making school-aged children wear a mask while playing basketball is insane and a huge liability. I can assure you that whoever made this policy has never actually played basketball. Playing basketball is an intensive cardio workout. With all the stop and go running on the court, the kids are already in major need of oxygen when they play. If you put a mask on kids while doing this, I want to warn the city council, you are asking for a huge liability. Something very bad is going to happen under this insane policy. As someone who has gladly coached basketball for Parks and Rec and had my son play for the last several years, I refuse to be part of such a reckless and dangerous policy. I know I'm not the only parent by a mile that feels this way. I know tons of people in Galt that have pulled their kids out of this league for this policy alone and with many more to come. Eventually, we need to start realizing that these reckless, unscientific and idiotic policies that Sacramento keeps churning out have nothing to do with science and everything to do with politics. Eventually, we need to be honest about the fact that Galt is less than an afterthought to Gavin Newsom and Sacramento. When are we going to start doing right by our own community and start taking care of its many needs without mindlessly saying, well, Sacramento told us so, so we must blindly obey. Sacramento does not have Galt's best interests in mind when they make these policies, and everyone knows it. For Sacramento, it's merely part of executing a political plan. How much longer will we allow our youth to be pulled into this obvious political skullduggery? Furthermore, when our governor says postal workers, prison guards, and even members of Congress are exempt from this experimental vaccine, the school-aged children still have to take it, that is not science, that's politics, and it's darkest and most shameful form. Yet the many Sacramento bureaucrats will keep braying on, saying, follow the science. It's about time we start to acknowledge this for what it really is. Our youth need to be protected from this type of slithery stupidity. There are so many other policies to point to with this garbage. We've all seen them or read about them. How much longer should Galt obey a governor who does not practice what he preaches? Our governor, who made all of our children be on distance learning for a year and a half, but sent his school kids, sent his kids to school on campus the entire time. Our governor, who shut down countless small businesses and restaurants when he went to French Laundry with a bunch of medical lobbyists, maskless no less. Our governor, who tells children to mask up and get vaccinated, but he won't vaccinate his own children, and apparently they don't have to wear masks either. He very clearly doesn't believe what he's saying, nor does he think this virus is as serious he claims when the cameras are on. The proof is in the pudding. It is time Galt did what is best for Galt, not what Sacramento tells us is best for Galt. Galt's youth has already paid more than enough of a price with their childhood. Thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, and we appreciate your expressing your views. Have a good evening, sir. Does anybody have, is there any additional hands raised online? I'm sorry.
There are no other hands raised online.
Okay. Mr. Heinz, I know the subject about the basketball came up before, and I know that you had explained to us about the school policy with the masks being worn. But I wanted to mention since this comment came up during public comment that I was made aware that apparently wrestling is not one of those sports. I thought it was kind of, I know we don't make these policies, that's a school policy, but I just would like to comment thinking it seems kind of a strange double standard. When wrestling, you're so close to your opponent. Also, I was made aware at your direction, Mr. Heinz, about the photograph that was shared regarding the high school volleyball and what I actually thought was strange was the photograph that was shared with me. There was eight players, I believe, in the photograph, and only one of them actually was wearing their mask. So I'm not here to police up policy, but I just think it's kind of senseless if you're going to have a policy for people to wear masks and all the players have them below their chin, not even covering their mouth or their face. So what I would like to ask Mr. Solis is, do, do you have an idea of how many people have withdrawn from the basketball because of this policy? Do we, do we have any idea?
Withdrawn? I don't know. I can tell you what our numbers are today.
Okay. What would that be?
We have two hundred and thirty-two people signed up as of today, and our three-year average is five hundred and sixteen.
Okay. So I know there was one complaint. We had had a couple of emails from citizens about this policy and they withdrew. So is it a few? Is it a dozen? I mean, do we have a ballpark idea of how many people have asked for a refund?
I don't have an idea. I mean, I can tell you it's been a few. I, I don't have that exact number. We're not tracking that. If people have asked for, you know, everything's been on the literature, and again, this isn't our policy as Mr. Montgomery said, it is the county's policy.
All right. You have any comment? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I'm just, I, I just want the caller to know that we do empathize with him. We know that these are, these are difficult times and there's, does not seem to be a, a certain level of consistency with some of the policies that we're seeing. And Mr. Mayor, I, I, this is the first I've heard about wrestling, and that would be a little, a bit inconsistent. But these are strange times, and all I ask is that there be a fair amount of patience out there in the community because we're, you know, we're under the guidance of the county, who is under the guidance of the state, and to a certain degree, the state's under the guidance of the federal government. And I think we're just doing the best we can to try to stay within the rules. And hopefully one day this will be over and we can get back to normal. And that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Would any of the council have any comments on this?
Well, I, I would comment. The city manager mentioned inconsistency. I did note the Kings are playing basketball within Sacramento County and no masks on the court, maybe fifty percent on the bench, and a smattering throughout the spectators. So, you know, I, I understand we're stuck with the county's guidance, but, you know, may come a time where we have to apply a little bit of common sense and start allowing that because I have a problem sometimes wearing a mask and seeing down low when I'm going down the stairs. So I can imagine these kids with a mask on their face trying to dribble a basketball or seat down to the floor, and it is, you know, does seem to be a hazard to me. So I wouldn't mind if we bring it up at the end, but if we did have a further discussion about adjusting our, our policy.
Would it be, would it be possible for, I mean, I know we reached out to the county to get clarity on this last time it came up, but in light of what Kevin, excuse me, Councilor Papinao brought up about the Kings, I would really like to question the county on the example that they're setting if they're not going to, you know, require from a professional level, then doesn't set a very good precedent or an example for us at the youth level. So I mean, is there a way that we could just reach out and kind of put the question to them about if, is that, is that in fact what's happening? And if so, then why are we required? I mean, just thought.
So I have a, I have my quarterly meeting with, or I'm sorry, my monthly meeting with the Sacramento County Area Parks Rec Directors on Thursday. I'm hoping to get my answer, my question answered about the masks. I know there's a provision in there for entertainment that they are not required to wear masks. I'm sure that they're probably using that as entertainment, but I will try and get clarity on that on Thursday when I meet with them.
Okay, that would be great. Councilmember Vice Mayor Sandu, do you have your hand up or you lowered it?
Just Mr. Mayor, I believe you already asked that question. The same thing I will ask the city manager. You know, this is a bad example. It's the same county, Sacramento County, the other player playing without mask and the children, and we all know that. As mentioned, Mr. Papinao, you know, when we have a mask, it's hard to go to upstairs. Sometimes you, you know, you fall in, but when these kids can play, it's hard for them. But I know we, we follow the guidelines to the county, but if somebody can clear with them, but this is a double signal.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, may I? So what Director and I, Director Solis and I will do is we will take these comments and commit them to writing. Director Solis will be meeting with his fellow Parks Directors on Thursday, but I think we probably need to bring this issue directly to the folks at county health. So Director Solis and I will, will gather these comments, and particularly, we want to talk about the inconsistency and how the entertainment provision is administered. And so we want to, we want to have this conversation with the county. And so the folks listening and to the folks watching, we understand, and so we'll pursue this with the county, and we'll come back to the, the council with a full report. Hopefully by the next meeting, and that'll be able to explain the county's position and how we feel about the county's position. We do still have an email out there that was sent to the county, I believe, on September twenty eighth, asking for clarity regarding the, the mask, and so we hope to get a response to that as well.
Okay. Councilman Vandenberg?
Yeah. Could you just please inquire about what standards need to be met before the mask is dropped? You know, so, so we have a goal to shoot for or, you know, justification for to or not to.
Understood.
All right. Well, it looks like we have some clear understanding of what we need to look into, and hopefully we can get some sort of clarity on a lot of this inconsistencies as Mr. Heinz phrased it. So do we have any other public comment on this particular item? Hands raised?
We do not have, oh. Maybe we checked that. Yes, we do have a hand raised.
Okay.
Pete, go ahead and unmute your mic and.
Pete, please state your name for the record, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, it won't take me five minutes, Sean. My name is Pete. My last name's Leisha. I'm very much on the same course as the, the other gentleman for, you know, the sports that are going on. As I sit here and watch Major League Baseball playoff game, the Los Angeles Dodgers playing in the state of California, nobody's wearing a mask there. No, no, no player on the bench has masks on, but yet we ask our youth to do this. Something's wrong. I'm just telling you, something's wrong, and we need to let our youth be able to have some sports activities the way sports should be played. Major League players that are making multi-millions of dollars playing the game don't have to, but yet we'll make a twelve-year-old child? That's all I got to say. Please look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete, and we are going to do just that. And I assure you that whatever information comes back, we will, we will definitely hold them accountable to these standards.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any additional hands raised online, Rose?
We do not have any more hands raised online.
Okay. All right. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is going to be item H two, the Acrylium Boulevard Traffic Analysis. Mr. Heinz?
Yes. So why, while either Mark Clarkson or Director Mike Selling is queuing up the PowerPoint for the presentation, I wanted to just sort of introduce this and let the council know that this is a continuation of a discussion that we, we've had back in, that started actually prior to my arrival here. This happened. Uh, prior to my arrival here, uh, this happened, uh, started, uh, during spring of twenty twenty. And, uh, the last discussion we had about Corillian was on June fifteenth. Uh, that particular council meeting, we're at that point in time where we, we had let council know that we. Will keep a, keep monitoring Corillian. As the developments and as housing options expand in that area and as demand on Corillian grows. Um, and so this is a continuation of that discussion. Um, the Vice Mayor has brought forth a request for the Vaxall intersection. And, but what we've decided to do in addition to addressing Vaxall is to just provide general. Education on Corillian, um, where, uh, stop signs are warranted. Um, as mentioned, when we did the June fifteenth meeting, uh, we have a toolbox or a toolkit. Of intersection improvements that we wanted to, that we told council that we would analyze. Um, whenever we brought an issue back concerning any of the intersections at Corillian. And so you'll find the results of that toolkit on, or the toolkit is, um, described on page two of five. Of the staff report and, um, the, um, review of the data on Corillian starts on page three of five. Um, the actual analysis of our toolkit starts on page four of five. Um, where we go through the various, uh, mechanisms for traffic. Control, crosswalks, flashing beacons, stop signs, roundabouts and traffic signals and basically take the council. And the public through our analysis of, of each of those toolkits and how they apply on Corillian right now. So I'm going to turn this over to Director Selling and, um, and, and, um, Mark Clarkson. Uh, to take you through the PowerPoint, uh, we welcome your, your questions, uh, during and after the presentation. Um, and so, uh, Mr. Selling, can you take it away, sir?
Yeah, uh, good evening, Mayor and council members, uh. So as, as the city manager just, uh, just articulated, uh, we'll be going through, uh, the analysis. Uh, Mr. Clarkson won't be providing the presentation and then, uh, he and I, uh, will be available for questions thereafter. Uh, I'll be running the PowerPoint and, uh, so with that, uh, Clarkson, uh, take it away.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, City Council. This is Mark Clarkson, City Engineer. A few months ago, I had heard that there was a petition had, had gone around and, and. Regarding a stop sign, uh, to be installed on Corillian at Vaxall. And, uh, after talking with the CM and the, and, uh, the Director, uh, Mike Selling. Um, we, we went ahead and we did our normal review that we do whenever we get comments coming in. We take it, we take it really serious and, and even though there may be intersections that, that I drive through every day. If somebody does have, anybody has a, a comment on it that comes into us, we will go out and do a site, a site review. A site distance review, we'll look at, uh, uh, multiple items out there, um. Way before we even come up with a conclusion of what we think that might happen out there, cause we know things can change. So we approached it the same way with staff and myself went out there and, uh, spent. Spent a lot of hours out there on Corillian and also, uh, you know, doing each of the intersections, but also reviewing. The GH, the recent GHD data that they had for, for traffic and analysis. We had, um. Uh, accident data that we received and, uh, and other data that we had internal to us that has, has happened over the years since I've been the city engineer. Uh, first, our next slide, slide, please, Michael. So, I went back as far as saying, how did this road come about and, and it's. You know, it was going to serve the city. If you look at the map off to the right. It was gonna connect into the northern, uh, part of the city that's outside of our city limits right now. That was originally in the general plan area. It was gonna go down and tie into the, into, um. The, uh, A Street at the Galt Interchange. And it was gonna be a, you know, a major arterial, so they designed it that way. So when you look at. At the speeds, you look at the, uh, intersections, the width of the, uh, lanes. Uh, site distance, you look at all of that, the, the, uh, uh, the Corillian is. That's where, where it was designed and that's how it's been since it's, it's been constructed over a period of years. Uh, next slide, please. So I looked at existing traffic conditions. GHD did a pretty, uh, good comprehensive, uh. Uh, review of the traffic, existing traffic. They also did traffic modeling, but. I'm, I'm the only concern with what's going on right now. We looked at, um, their data and most of this stuff was their data that we just. Um, that I just reviewed, but then when you get into, in the, in two thousand and eighteen, I did a, uh, speed study out there. And eighty-five percentile was about forty-four miles an hour. We also reviewed the, uh, since two thousand and eighteen, we reviewed all the accident data out there. And what I do wanna, uh, comment on if, if, uh, um. You know, if I may on the accidents, half of the accidents, a little more than half of the accidents happened at, at Corillian and. Twin Cities and the other half were, uh, basically at Walnut and Corillian. And those were people running stoplights, running stop signs, rear ending. And, and, uh, those, that's, that was about half of them. We had another half dozen or so at Lake Park. Where people were trying to enter into a driveway across from Lake Park into the driveway of a shopping center. And, uh, and not yielding, and then the others were just miscellaneous, you know, of vehicle repair problem. Uh, people hitting something and running and leaving the scene and a few other things like that. Uh, but mo- a, a lot of the intersections didn't have any, uh, accidents recorded. And there were no accidents reported between, uh, vehicles and, and, uh, pedestrians and bicycles in this period. The, um, other thing that I noticed, uh, or that I just wanna, uh, bring up on Lake Park is that. We have worked with the developer right across the street from, uh, where Lake Park comes in a Corillian. And we're realigning that driveway, so the construction's going on right now. We're doing grading out there and undergrounding. And that whole driveway is gonna be aligned, right? They worked with the, the, we required them to work with the. Um, with the shopping center owners and to realign it so we have a, a nice, uh, straight alignment. And that should probably take care of any of the minor accidents that have occurred in the last several years out in that area. Um, and then I, I list the inters- intersection controls. Next slide, please. So looking at how pedestrians and bicyclists get around that we have through some lists in there. One of the things that it's hard to do is to count bicyclists and pedestrians, can't put out. You know, you, you can't put out the hoses out there and, and check them. So, so what we did is, uh, um, we started. Searching, we found, uh, company to provide the right cameras for us, cause we're gonna install cameras. We purchased a camera, found out. Uh, had to return it, cause it didn't match what our IT department needed. And it didn't match with our system, so we ordered another camera. We actually got it up and working, uh, last week. Um, but a chip failed in it, so we had to do a repair and it was up on Monday. And, um, and we finally were getting data, but we only have a, a twenty-four hours so far and that's at Vaxall and. Corillian and there we'll be able to count, the pedestrians will be able to count a bicyclist. And, uh, and come up with a good number there. We're gonna, uh, continue that. Uh, over the next several weeks throughout several of the intersections there. Probably take us a month and a half or so, and we have to do it, uh, primarily, we look at data between Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, when school is on, uh, daylight hours generally, because that's when most of the, uh, most of the pets and the, um. And the bicyclists occur, but we did have two pa- two bicyclists on film. In a twenty-four hour period that came across Corillian at Vaxell. And, uh, they were riding together. They looked like a brother and sister. Anyway, next slide, please. So looking at what, what we can do right now, since we don't have anything that we, um, that can meet. Anywhere near the different types of warrants that we have, uh, given different types of percentages, decreases and such. Um, we're, we're pretty far away from it in the unco- in the intersections that only have the, the minor street being controlled. Uh, the minor streets being like, uh, Vaxall and, and, uh, Lake Park and Elk Hills and so forth. The major street is Corillian here at this point, but anyway, so we look at, there, there's, there's ways to kind of slow. Um, people down and that's giving them a visual, uh, relief of some type. That makes them think that they have, uh, less room or they have, uh. Um, you know, they have to slow down so they can, uh, visually see what's going on. Restriping is one of those that you get, uh, traveling. Uh, travel lane width a little smaller. You've seen the, um, uh, the ball bouts around. We're not recommending them here at this point, but, uh, that is a, you know, that, that's another, uh, effect. Doing more landscape ball bouts and stuff like that are, are usually, uh, pretty key in, in slowing down traffic when you really wanna give them down to. Twenty, twenty-five miles an hour. Um, then if we restripe Corillian, we have a chance to, uh, to widen the bike lanes a little bit. And when you look at, when you look at the bike lanes we have right now, that gutter pan is just a horrible mess for anybody. Trying to ride on that, so they'll ride up on the pavement and that puts them right next to the, right next to the through traffic. And, uh, and unless you're really experienced bike rider, you're probably not gonna ride out that way. So we have an opportunity potentially to widen the bike lanes. We also have, um, um, radar speed signs that are, are potential that can help. They've made some really nice. Uh, improvements to them over the years. They'll collect data, uh, they'll do different flashing signals. They'll, they'll do all different types of things. And, uh, and the ones like on the trailer I shown the picture, I was here for over forty-five minutes trying to get somebody to go over forty-five miles an hour. And that's the fastest speed I could get right there, uh, during that time, and that was in a morning commute. Um, but sometimes people will, will be immune to it if they see it all the time. And so we do, uh, look at probably if we go that route with radar speed signs, we would move them around occasionally. Next slide, please. So as I indicated, we're gonna continue to review out here. We're gonna put up our, our camera. We're gonna take counts. We're gonna see, um. Uh, if there's any anomalies out there that haven't been captured before. Um, if we do any, uh, improvements like restriping, we will do a new survey several months after that occurs to see. Uh, what, what happens at that time. And then we're just gonna continue to monitor, you know, at the uncontrolled minor streets and, uh. And see what's, um, what is occurring and what we can do at that time. Uh, next slide, please. One of the things that I do wanna point out is that there is, uh, in our budget this year, the council did approve money, uh, for Corillian. Uh, for work on Corillian, so we already have, uh, money available if the council chooses, uh, to work. Uh, in that direction and, um. Otherwise, this picture right here, I got a hero. That hero is that guy to the right who's got the boxes about eight feet above his head. That's my hero. I want a bicycle like that. Uh, probably, probably do that sometime when I, when I retire. Anyway, any questions?
Uh, so, uh, City Engineer Clarkson, uh, there was one thing that perhaps, uh, Director. Uh, Solis can add about the, um, landscaping around the intersection, um.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll mention it for him. They've done a terrific job out there. We went out when we first heard of the, uh. Uh, the potential issues out at, at Vaxall. Um, Mike and myself went out, we did site distance, looking, we actually, uh, had parks and they did a terrific job. Moving a lot of vegetation, cutting it back. The vegetation slowly grows and it gets trimmed and people like it really nice and. And then we realized, oh, maybe it's a little overgrown and, and we cut it back and, and Parks Department had done a terrific job. On, uh, on seeing the, uh, uh, on cutting back the, to the site distance requirements that we need out there. They've done a terrific job.
Thank you.
So, we, could you minimize the, um, the, uh, PowerPoint there? Just cause I, I can't see everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. So what I like to do here is, um, I'm sure that there's gonna be a lot of discussion, so. Um, to, to, to make sure everybody gets, uh, you know, uh, to chance to speak and, and, and. And not take up too much time, I'd like to ask if, uh, we'll go around and let each council member, I'll ask if you each have comments or, or questions for. Uh, Mr. Clarkson or, or Mr. Selling, um, and maybe if you could, if you'd have, uh, you know, a lot of comments or anything, maybe we could break it up. Cause I will circle around and give everybody multiple opportunities to speak, but, uh, wanna make sure everybody gets a chance and we don't, uh, go too long on each, each thing. So, um, I'll go ahead and, uh, start this off by just mentioning one quick thing and, uh. I just wanna say thanks for, for bringing this forward, uh, to staff, um, because. Traffic concerns, uh, of all sorts, speeding, crosswalk safety, pedestrian safety, you name it, have. Probably been the number one complaint that I received from citizens since I've been on the council, uh, number two and probably landscaping stuff, but. Um, so this is an important issue and I'm glad to finally have it here to, to discuss things in depth. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and let somebody go first, so. Um, does anybody want to put their hand up and start it off here with any comments or questions? Mr. Papinow, go ahead.
So I did come up with one question, actually, while you were speaking, uh, Mr. Clarkson, uh, this, you just mentioned the speed signs, collect data. Um, can you go into that a little bit, little bit further if you're able as to what kind of data they collect and how that might help us?
Yeah, that some of the newer, newer signs now have data where they can, they can count the cars coming by. They can, they. Collect all the data for the speeds that are going and you can download that and you can come up with. You know, um, different things, different hours of the day, you know, it'll go twenty-four hours a day and it just continues to count. And do speeds on, on vehicles. Um, and, uh, I don't know, um. I haven't seen one that has a camera on it yet. I'm sure they probably do, but, uh, you would need a camera to determine if the vehicle is a. A pickup or a car or something like that, but, but otherwise, um, uh, you know, they have good data. Um, they're not being used for, for doing, um, uh. Speed surveys, but what they can do is show us where there may be a potential for a speech survey being needed. And then that way we can put out our hoses and camera and go from there, um, uh, to get, uh, better data, so. So it's a twenty-four hour collection of data that's terrific.
Great, thank you. Um, other, uh, uh, observations that came to me, um, in. Anticipation of, of this discussion and actually post two weeks ago. Um, is if you all may have seen in the news. What finally came out in Sacramento about their incident on Freeport. Which was basically a, what appears to be a haphazard change to a crosswalk. And the pedestrians, uh, still believe they had the safety, but they weren't protected. And Sacramento paid out eleven million dollars some time ago, it's twenty eighteen. It just happened to come to light now because somebody dug it up, so. I appreciate, um, our, our engineers and work because. You know, before we move forward with changing any of our controls, um, you know, we, we do have to, this is. The world we live in, be careful that we're not ending up doing something haphazard and, and putting ourselves in that position, so. That'll, that's all I have for now.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, I don't see any hands raised, so I'll, I'll ask a couple of questions, uh, if another council has a comment, so just raise your hand, I'll let you go. Um, I had a couple of questions, Mr. Clarkson, so I just wanna clarify the, the. The data on the traffic study for Corillian was forty-five hundred to seven thousand cars per day. I'm assuming that was from the same, that was all from the twenty eighteen traffic survey that was done, right? All that data was from the same study?
Correct, um, correct. You have more, uh, uh, traffic up by, uh, up by. Twin Cities and it goes less as you go down towards Semahorn. So the lower number is, is at Vaxall, the higher number is at, is at, um, Twin Cities.
Okay, so I, I will say just for all transparency, I, I don't live on the east side of town and so although I do travel that area. Uh, you know, from time to time, I, I kinda, you know, with proceeding this discussion, I wanna kinda go over there and kinda. Take a look at things. So I went over and spent about an hour over at Corillian today. I spent. I spent, uh, about forty-five minutes sitting at the intersection of, uh, Lake Canyon and, uh, Corrillian at the intersection around three o'clock. About two forty-five to about three thirty around school time. I was just kind of trying to get an idea of. The amount of, uh, you know, pedestrian traffic and, and cars and things. And then I did spend some time traversing, uh, past Vauxhall, kind of taking a look at that. And I think it is important to mention that I think that. Each of the intersections that have been brought up are not really being brought up. With the same concerns. And what I, what I mean is like Lake Canyon, I think for me. Is more of a pedestrian concern because it's a highly used crosswalk. You know, you have the park, you have the, the school down the street. Elk Hills is kind of the same way with McCaffrey down the street, but the Lake Canyon, I feel like that's a more, one that I've heard a lot of complaints about. Where there's a concern from citizens. I know that a lot of, there hasn't been anybody hit or killed in that, in that crosswalk, but. I, but I think the concern there is not so much, uh, auto related as, as more pedestrian safety, whereas something like Vauxhall. Um, I don't think Vauxhall is probably going to be a highly traveled. Crosswalk. I mean, I could be wrong, but I think that is more of a traffic safety because. Those of you that have traveled Vauxhall, you know, if you're going southbound especially is what I think the dangerous direction. You kind of come over this rise and I don't know the, the angle of the degree of the street, but. You kind of come over and I, I did it like three times at like forty-five, right at forty-five, the speed limit. And you come over, you, you can't see the crosswalk at all. It's like you can't see the angle of visibility. There's nothing. There is two crosswalk signs, uh, they're not lighted, they're just the yellow. A metal signs that's, you know, saying to get a crosswalk. But what I did notice on the one going southbound. That it is blocked by a tree. You can't see it till it's almost right next to you. So that would be important to note that. Um, but it. What I think the concern here is not so much people, but people trying to pull out from Vauxhall. Uh, you come over that rise and you're just right there. And I think, you know, what I've heard from citizens is that. They have to kind of creep out and kind of watch people come flying over that rise. And even if you're doing the speed limit, which. I don't dispute the traffic state at forty-four. I mean, if you did a traffic state today, three years later. You know, it's probably going to be maybe the same, maybe it's going to be forty-five, but I don't think it's going to be like significantly higher from twenty eighteen. So. But I think again, what I'm stating here is I think that there's just a concern with a traffic collision. Risk at that intersection because it seemed like a dangerous, the visibility is poor. Compared to something like Lake Canyon or Elk Hills, where I think the visibility is much better. Uh, because it's a straight on, but there is a lot of, uh, more pedestrian, chance for pedestrian activity and especially with children. So I just wanted to state that, that we're not talking about, you know, apples and apples at every intersection here. I think we need to look at them, think about each one individually. So. Does any of the council, uh, want to speak? Um, Vice Mayor Sandy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Heinz and his staff. Spent a lot of time, uh, a couple of weeks ago on this issue and then also in the detailed report. You giving us. We all know, you know, the Corrillian Boulevard, a couple of years ago. The staff want to make all eleven roundabout. And they want to be master plan. On June fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Council rejected that and council. Ask the. Staff to individual if there is anything individual in the future. And this, I have a two concern, one is on Vauxhall. And the other on a Lake Canyon. The citizen asked. And since I'm living on that corridor, I, I travel every day. On the report, one thing I'm not agree with that, is that all the intersection are. Currently operating safe and efficiently. This is not true. And the other thing I, I, I see on the report. Something they mentioned, they maybe there is a roundabout is a safe. But we already mentioned on June fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the other thing is this, this is the citizen, they're living around this corridor. And then they, they mentioned, they said with this Corrillian Boulevard has become a race for many drivers. Mr. Clarkson, he said he went over there. He watched for forty-five minute, he don't catch nobody going over forty-five. That might be a very good time. And you know, especially when the people going from Vantage Oak going to the south. You know, there is, there, there is nothing till, uh, Simmerhorn. And I certainly there can be a, you know, a, 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 the driver are speedy. The residents over there, they have a concern. They said when they travel, walking bike path, local residents, the blind corner. I was, I was talking about, uh, 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 the, the, the citizen, they ask. They don't, they, they know that and I already know that there is no, the, 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 the traffic does not going to be justified. Anything doing on Vauxhall. But there is. But there is a, uh, structure of the road. Slope. Blind spot. That's usually affect, uh, uh, you know, unfortunately there is no big accident. But when car going forty-five or fifty mile an hour, if there is an accident happen. This not can be a benefit, this can be a fatality. So I'm, my job is to, for, to use a preventable action. If something is not, I, 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 I know there is a report, it say if there is a five accident happened, then it's a stop sign. But my opinion is wrong. We want to do something when five person get killed. That's not the right way to do. And I am, I'm, I'm agree with the engineering report, Mr. Clarkson, he's a very experienced person. But my concern is in those both intersection, Lake Canyon and Vauxhall. You know, when the normal citizen ask, they think they might be a stop sign is, is reasonable. But we need to study whatever we need to do. There is a on Vauxhall, they will, they will be, if we don't take any action, there will be a something hap. On a Lake Canyon, uh, I don't know what study, but I will, this study was done in twenty eighteen, uh, Mr. Clarkson. That, that's for forty-five hundred and seven thousand, right?
Correct.
And that, uh, uh, you know, on the full lane, five thousand to forty thousand, it should be, uh, you know, it's, it's like in four base, uh, four lines, right? And when. That, that's study done. When we have that stop sign on the vintage of Concorian. You know, there is stop sign, I think on back in twenty seventeen or twenty sixteen on vintage of Concorian.
Yes, that one, that vintage oak and vintage oak slash Ambrosia on Corrillian. That four-way stop was, um, was developed through when Elliot, uh, Holmes. I believe it was three C. When they came before the planning commission, they did a traffic study and it, and it showed that the. That that intersection would need a stop sign with their traffic coming onboard and also with, with, uh, the additional. Uh, developments that were scheduled in that, in that time back. Uh, it started in, I think their, their report was done in two fifteen. And so when I came onboard, um, they had, they hadn't started grading yet. And, uh, but the stop sign was put in because it was required by the conditions of their map approval. To put in a four-way stop based on the traffic study that was completed and accepted by the city council at that time.
But the study, what's mean by three C? Could you a little bit explain to me, uh? Three C study, traffic study, it is the same thing. They count the traffic, how many cars going or they're doing a different way?
No, they, they follow the engineering requirements. They had a, a traffic firm that did a, uh, traffic. Study out there. They also did a modeling. What would happen when River Oaks developed all the way out to Marengo and when other subdivisions up, out there developed? Then that, um, it showed that that requirement of vintage oak was going to need a, was going to need to be, uh, controlled. A fully controlled intersection. And so that was conditioned on their, on their maps. To, uh, to install that at their cost. And that's what, that's what occurred with that one.
So, so, so there's been the engineering report, they include, I believe. All the east side development and they also include the Liberty Ranch. Even their Liberty Ranch, that, uh, new subdivision over there is, is not even start anything yet. And that's why they come as a, that stop sign with our threshold. And, and did you have that report in, in your office? I just want to, I just want to see what was that time when you put a stop sign? And what was the traffic count? Cause we want to make sure the traffic count should be lowered. So we don't have any lawsuit, right? Because that these, the east side is developed after a four year. And, and, and the Liberty Ranch even don't start yet.
The parameters that they were given at that time was before I was city engineer. But I know that the, the, and I, I'm not, I'm not making an excuse for that. It's just. What you have is you had development that was coming on. They, they performed their, their, uh, plan. Um, their traffic study as they were directed to by staff at that time. And then they were given, you know, it showed that that, um, that intersection needed to be controlled. And so that the city council adopted, um, adopted their conditions, which we, uh, one of their many conditions was to put in the. The control at, at, um, at vintage oak.
Okay. I, I do understand the city council might be adopted. We don't know with the, the threshold. To be met on, 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 on that vintage oak or not.
Yeah, it's when, when you're doing it, when you're doing a, a future development, you, they work off of models. And they try to predict what the flows, what's going to happen with the flows with different, uh, development going on. And, and they come up with it. They don't have, the actual counts don't, didn't warrant it. Um, but it was their model that said, once their homes are in place, once, once this level of activity occurs. It's, it's going to be needed. That's when they're looking at the impacts that the developments. Uh, doing, and you know, they look at all types of things, you know, pedestrian impacts and. Vehicle impacts and school impacts. They look at all of that. And these are all models that they utilize. In order to determine what their impacts are, and then they have to mitigate their impacts. And part of that mitigation on the traffic was to do the, um, uh, to do the controlled intersection at, at a vintage oak.
Okay. And then the same scenario on a Vauxhall, you know, the notch, all that notch area, it can be in city lemon. And we don't know when it can be all going to develop and it's going to be impact on, uh, the traffic. Right?
And you are correct on that. And when, when plans start coming in, when tentative maps start coming to us. Uh, from those subdivisions, that's our potential subdivisions, that's when we'll look at what their, what their impacts are. We'll, we'll require all types, uh, planning usually takes the lead on this. Requires all types of environmental documents and, and, you know, impact reports and, and to see. What their impacts are and, and studies will be done in that area. The models will be performed in, you know, on Corrillian, on Marengo and wherever else, wha- whatever development occurs at that time. And that's when we can see what impacts are being predicted and then what mitigation we have to do to, uh, uh, to have the developer. Uh, mitigate those impacts.
Okay. So, so that's been some of the stop signs we put them in. Before even all the development come in, before we all the threshold. And what's the threshold in order to have a stop sign, any?
Well, there's a multitude of, of warrants. If you're looking at, at changing something that. That, uh, is existing right now. There's, uh, there's a series of warrants that we review that's in the MUTCD, that's minutes with. Codes, that's also Caltrans codes that they have. And, uh, and so we follow what the warrants are there and it's, it's, it's similar to when a developer is, or is coming on and they're doing a model. The numbers that they develop with the model will start, they'll compare them to the different warrants of, uh, for controlled intersections and such like that. And, uh, so it's just, you know, they're, they're held two different ways. One is existing conditions with the warrants and then. A model with the warrants. Uh, with the notch coming in, you know, I, I don't know what their impacts are going to be without seeing them, a model on their traffic. Of how, uh, what is, what's going to occur to Corrillian. And I think with the notch coming in, that's when Corrillian gets tied into the, uh, gall to interchange. So that's going to have an impact on, uh, Corrillian. There's no doubt there.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clarkson. I'm going to let the other people have a question. I will come back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on the traffic studies. If people were to call in all the time and complain, that would be counted as, as part of the problem or the numbers?
Not, well, that can get things started to be looking out there. You know, it's, it's, um. You know, people call in and then, and they talk about, you know, whether it's pedestrian crossing or, or traffic driven, you know, we go out there and. And we'll do a full review of whatever they're looking at, you know, we'll, we'll go from one end to the other. And we take our time on it, but, but as far as when you're looking at warrants or you're looking at making changes. Yeah, the customers who are using it are the ones who, you know, who can help direct, you know, the future of that roadway. You know, like Corrillian, I mean, one of the things that, that, you know, that planning came through and that, you know, as so. As it was already mentioned, you know, a whole series of, uh, uh. Roundabouts up and down Corrillian in the millions of dollars range and, but the intent of that. Uh, uh, it was an extreme attempt, attempt, but the attempt, attempt of what they were trying to do is to make it a multimodal. To where bicycles can be riding on a lane of road and, and you squeeze down the traffic and you slow down the traffic and. And that was an extreme case, but that, that's a vision that can be, that you can have with a road. You know, if the road isn't doing what you want it to do. Um, and it's not either meeting the conditions, you know, as having as much traffic as you want on it, or it's having too high a speeds. There's things you can do to, to turn it into the road that you want it to be. Um, and as I indicated, the, you know, the, the roundabouts are a terrific way of, of slowing people down. You know, but then you, then you're changing what you want the road to do. And so, so the, the customers and city council can, can determine what they want each of these roads, you know, to look like. Um, when you look at, at Old Town, um, years ago, when they came out and they did the beautification and they did the bulb outs and they did the stuff at that time. That's what the city council envisioned, uh, changing an ordinary street in a, in a, uh, business area. And, and doing what they did with it, which, uh, helps slow down the traffic. Help change the, the, the way the road is used. So, so we do have that, you know, I mean, the council, you know, is the ones that provide direction on, on how we're going to view the road.
So you mentioned no one would drive faster than forty-five, uh, with the cart out there. And then you also mentioned that. The eighty percentile was forty-four miles per hour. So I don't see how those two jive really, I'm just making that point. No, really didn't answer. Uh, I wanted to also mention that Lake Canyon Avenue was supposed to have a lighted crosswalk, but none of the lights in, in the roadway function. They haven't functioned for a long time. I shouldn't say that. They haven't functioned for a while though. It's, it's, it's fair to mention out, uh. When the Corrillian Boulevard master plan was presented to us, it was perfectly fine to have eleven roundabouts. Perfectly fine to have eleven stop signs, perfectly fine to have eleven stoplights if we so choose. Nobody, nobody brought any of these concerns that we'll be discussing in this meeting or the previous meeting. And now suddenly everybody's, you know, running sirens about what we should, could and can't do, but as long as the state wants it, it's fine. So. To me, it's more just about justifying, um, the engineering necessities as an engineer sees fit. And on that road where at Vauxhall, there's a downslope. Uh, I've, I've been through there. It is a bit of a challenge. You, you can, it's a, one of the easier places to make a mistake. Let's put it that way. Um, the road also narrows there, so people feel like they're gonna get cut off by a slower vehicle, they're gonna wanna, I would think they would wanna speed there. Also, the Corillian Boulevard master plan, much of that was touted as taking care of future problems. I don't see why that doesn't apply now, uh, it's, it's the same road, same city, same future, you know, so uh. I don't know why we can't, those seem to be plenty of justifications, to me, engineering justifications to put a stop sign in a lighted crosswalk, just like Lake Canyon. Um, personally, I'd like to see the entire road restriped with. The road, the lanes being on the narrow side. Bike lanes bigger with the green, I think the green, I don't like the big, long, giant stripes of green, but I think the green helps. People see the bike lanes more and, and well, that will help slow people down, I think if we installed. Two stop signs, full stop signs, there wouldn't be such a long runway down Corillian Boulevard. That would, and I bet if you put in two stop signs, put in the, the lighted speed li- uh, speed indicators. Let it go for a couple of months, you, and then did a study, you'd find that everybody slowed down, cause I think you ought to drop the speed limit as well, I, all those things should happen, I think there's. You just mentioned that, you know, we, we, we're here to, um. The Corillian Boulevard master plan was fine to do as the council wanted and, you know, that's kind of what I'm asking. And that's all I have.
May I mention something um, on, this is Clarkson, um. When you look at the master plan, they were looking at, at, at the traffic, they were comparing to what the traffic would be. There in twenty years from now at buildout. And, and so that's what they were looking at is, is you, you're gonna have traffic in the, in the uh, ten, fifteen thousand car range. And, and the discussion there was to try to get less vehicles coming down Corillian and moving them over towards Marengo, so it was a little different. A different thing, cause they were looking at twenty years down the road, um, what, what the traffic's gonna look like right now. And um, and so, um, that's, that's kind of the difference here, we're looking at what's existing there. And if, if we're gonna change something, you know, then, you know, like if we're gonna put bulbouts out there, you know, in certain areas. Then we would, we would do some modeling and, you know, we would do a full engineering analysis on, on the impacts of what that would have. And, and then we can adjust things accordingly, you know, um, you know, with existing conditions, but what they were looking at is twenty years out.
Um, that, that was exactly my point, uh, you, you're making my point quite frankly, and you know, on Marengo, there's been. A lot of complaints about people racing and people actually crashing into cement walls protecting homes, they go for the cement wall, but they, you know. Destroying cars and walls and it's had, the lady that complained had three accidents inside of a year or close to accidents. Uh, and then one last point, um, someone mentioned to me that the SACB had an article today, I didn't have a chance to read it. But it was something about speed lumps that allow emergency vehicles to pass through. At the same time, uh, preventing uh, cars from driving excessive speeds, so please look into that. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I was gonna go next, but I saw Rich raise his hand, and since he hasn't spoken yet, I'm gonna go ahead and let you go next, Rich, go ahead.
I'll be fast, I was just wondering if there was any public comment, I'd like to hear a public comment before I, um, I have a couple of questions asked.
Sure, we can, we can do that, um. I, I can go ahead and open the public comment, we can keep it open while the council is discussing. If you are, are watching and would like to raise your hand and make a comment, you may do so. If you are on the phone, you can press star nine and that will raise your hand, do we have any hands raised currently, Rose?
We do have one hand raised, Mr. Satter. Go ahead and unmute your mic, and you have five minutes.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, great, um, thank you to the um, city staff for putting this report together. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of points on some of this, um, like to, um, I happen to live off. Vox Hall and Corillian is my backyard. So honestly, the thought of a stop sign at Vox Hall doesn't really excite me, because then that means I'm going to hear. Cars idling and taking off from that stop sign. I also don't really have as much of an issue traversing the um. The, the hill, you know, you can, if you pay attention, either driving down Corillian or. Making your turn out of Vox Hall, you're, you're, you know, able to navigate it pretty well. Um, I would like to comment about the, the speed lumps, Corillian's an arterial. It's a major arterial, so speed lumps are designed for residential areas, so I would see that as a alternative. And I also don't wanna see us to stop signs as, as speed control, so certainly setting up. Citizens to potentially, you know, have Corillian be a stop sign every five hundred feet or at every intersection. Um, when it's not justified by the, the traffic surveys or the traffic studies. You know, that, that means people are stopping for really no reason at all, so I just wanna make sure that, that. You know, we're, we're, I, I, I kinda like the idea of maybe restriping it, because I think it, it. Does need to, to be improved for, for biking, but I think. What um, Mr. Selling said about the original intent of that road. It's, it's got no driveways, it's got no houses on it, it's, it's the way to get from Twin Cities to the south part of town. And those of us that live on Box Hall, we have to go all the way down Corillian. And I would rather not be doing it at twenty-five miles an hour and stopping every five feet. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jerry.
Thank you.
We have any additional hands raised online?
We do have another hand, we have Priti Burke.
Okay.
Priti, go ahead and unmute your mic, and you have five minutes.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and good evening Mayor and Council, I just had a few comments about Corillian and Box Hall. Um, when was the study done, was it in recent year and a half during COVID? Um, was it when school was out for most of the year and most citizens were working from home? If so, I don't think the survey that was done shows accurate, or should I say realistic results? For Vox Hall in particular, in the morning, it is very hard to make it out of Vox Hall. Because there's a lot of traffic for those going to drop off their kids and those, those going to work to get on ninety-nine. You literally have to peek out, past the stop lines to be able to see oncoming traffic. Especially because of the humps and the lanes narrowing. Those vehicles are usually coming pretty fast because there is no traffic control until Simmerhorn invented joke. Also, when citizens see a speed reader, they usually tend to slow down by just the sight of it. In addition, keep in mind that as more rooftops are coming to gulp, so are more cars and traffic. Does this traffic study take into account future housing developments in the area, or do you need to wait until those start to take that into account? As our lives are somewhat going back to normal, many of us are still working from home. I strongly believe this area needs to be reassessed or looked into further to see what we can do to make our streets safer, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Priti.
Any additional hands, Rose?
There are no, there, there are no hands.
Okay. Um, I had a few more questions and, um. So, Mr. Clarkson, I was thinking about what you were saying about the uh, stop sign at the uh, vintage, uh, Oak and Ambrosio. Um, so it'd be fair to say that, that, that stop sign wasn't really uh, installed with. Because of the conditions of a particular road survey, it was, it was, it was installed because of the. Condition of the uh, Elliott Homes being added in that area and the, and the potential, that's, as if I heard that correct.
Yeah, it's from the homes being developed there along with their traffic study that showed that it was, it was going to be needed.
Okay, and would the, would it be fair to say the same thing would apply to the stop sign at, at Elk Hills and Walnut, the one across from the fire station? Cause I know that we had discussed that uh, particular stop sign at great length, uh, years back. And uh, the, I know, remember the warrants never really kind of justifying it, but then when Veranda went in. Then uh, I think that was also a condition of that project, is that also similar?
Correct, that was, that was done by traffic studies that they were required to do at that time for their, and then they were required. Uh, they showed that there was gonna be a, a warrant, uh, meeting warrants at that intersection with their development coming in. And um, so they were required to do that.
Okay, so. If it, it ba- or based on that, well, we don't know because you haven't done a study recently, but based on the twenty eighteen study that you, that you did. Which included the entire length of Corillian along with Vintage Oak, um. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that study did not, and probably be safe to assume if you did another study, that it would probably be fairly consistent. Uh, showing that Vintage Oak, that particular intersection, uh, according to the two thousand eighteen survey that we've been presented tonight. Did not meet warrants for a stop sign. Based on that study.
Well, that study didn't include pedestrians, there was a lot of things that, that weren't included in that. Um, I, I mean, in the two eighteen, they didn't do a pedestrian count, um. And that's why I went out and, and the city purchased the camera so we could start doing pedestrian counts.
Because that, because Vintage Oak, because that stop sign was based on contingencies of the Elliott Development, not based on a traffic study. Like the, similar to the traffic study that was done on the entire length of Corillian, the one that was presented to us tonight, right?
N- uh, no, they, they did a traffic, they did a traffic model that showed the impacts of their development, what would occur at that intersection.
Okay.
And, and then their impacts, uh, warrant, you know, showed that it was gonna meet warrants to have that. Um, yeah, for a requirement of having a controlled intersection.
Okay, so didn't meet, it was go- so it was based on a model and not a trap, it was, it's a different, a different uh. Different parameters were applied, um, I have a question for um, Mr. Hoffman, if you're there. Mr. Hoffman, do you know roughly off the top of your head, how many houses went in on the Elliott Development that I was just referring to? That came in over there between Marengo and, do you recall?
I mean, the entire thing, you're, you're talking about everything south of.
The newer version, the newer homes that came in after twenty seventeen. Was it like a hundred fifty, two hundred?
That entire development, I think is at least two hundred, and then if you were to say. What new development has taken place? After uh, the Corillian Boulevard study, it would be the sixty houses that were built at Veranda, that are currently under construction.
And, and how many, how many, Mr. Hoffman, how many, how many residents? Is there at Parlin Oaks, the development on the corner of Corillian and Walnut that's being developed right now?
Right off the bat, that'll be a hundred and forty-four homes. And usually our, our general plan identifies that a, a house is having. I think three point two residents per unit.
Okay, so a hundred and, and then how many apartments? Eighty-three?
Uh, there's eighty.
Okay, so roughly two hundred and twenty-ish.
Yeah.
Right, so what I'm wondering is, it seems to me. That if we're able to justify putting stop signs in at places like Vintage Oak or at Elk Hills. Based on a model that is projecting the supposed future of what traffic could be for developments. Then why are we not using that same criteria to analysis, analysis, to analyze uh, Vauxhall or Lake Canyon when we have. Two hundred and twenty, you know, dwelling units going in on the corner of. Um, Corillian and Walnut, we just had sixty going at Veranda. I mean, that, that's a lot of development, not including the Greenwood cottages. You have to assume that a lot of people from Parlin Oaks are going to be traversing northbound to get over to Twin Cities to go to places like Walmart or Rayleigh's. Or any of those, and definitely Greenwood Cottage would be, but that one's close. Um, Veranda probably as well, Veranda people definitely probably gonna be traversing northbound through Lake Canyon intersection through Elk Hills. So, I'm, I'm just kinda struggling with the fact that. I'm seeing traffic states tonight that are showing us that don't really justify us doing any kind of controls. At these intersections, but yet we had no problem doing those such controls when it was a contingency of a development. And I understand it was a different analysis, but I think we're using, I, I think it's fair to, it's like a double standard in my opinion. I, I, I just struggle with the thought that, I mean, if we, if we ran the same traffic, what we did, I mean, the same traffic study from twenty eighteen. That shows that Vauxhall and Lake Canyon don't really, we, don't really meet a certain criteria to require a stop sign or, or controls. The same thing would apply today to Vintage Oak, that same traffic study shows the same thing for Vintage Oak, but yet a stop sign exists there.
I'd have to defer to, to Mr. Clarkson.
Yeah, that was, that wasn't a question for you, Mr. Hoffman, I, you answered my question on the housing, um, I'm gonna let Mr. Lozano go, go ahead, sir.
I think Mr. Selling had a response for that, or he had his hand up.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, and I can understand how Mayor, how you can uh, you know, feel like it's kind of a double standard. The thing is, when you have an existing intersection, like some of the ones that you're talking about. If there is no development that's coming in, that we can basically, uh, you know, through their traffic analysis and. When a development is proposed and we look at the tentative map and determine, you know, what the traffic uh. Study needs to look at, the consultant, uh, the traffic expert will um, will look at it, they'll run through the model. And determine where the trips are likely to go based on the existing road network and what's proposed for the development. And so they run that into the model based on, like you were just asking, the number of homes and whatnot. And there are uh, approximate, it's approximately, as I recall, around ten trips a day per home, basically. Is what the traffic generation is, uh, it's kind of a rule of thumb, that's not exact, but uh, anyway, that's, that's what it is. Uh, so they will run that through the model, uh, and based on, on their model analysis, they look at it, refine it, does it make sense? They also will send their draft analysis to us as the city, uh, engineers, we review it likewise. To ensure that, uh, does it make engineering sense, does that make sense where the traffic's going? I, you know, if, if the model is showing something that looks out of whack, they're sending, you know, a percentage of the traffic generation. Uh, from that development uh, onto a road where there's no, uh, you know, destination, if you will, or attraction, whether it's a commercial center or. You know, an employment center or something like that, um, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we look for, so it, it has to make sense, and there is some engineering judgment in that. Uh, like I mentioned before my presentation at the last meeting. So between, you know, the consultant, uh, running the model and, and us reviewing it. And, and see what it shows, and if it shows, hey, this development is gonna have an impact to some existing intersection. Like uh, where Roaks did at, at Vintage Oak, uh, then that's where it comes in, we review it again, we concur. Uh, or the city staff did at the time with, with uh, with the traffic study that was done. Uh, through the modeling, but that's the only tool you have when a new development is coming in. Now, at an existing intersection, once it's in, what we have is actual data, we know how many cars, we do counts, we know how many cars are pedestrians or bicyclists. Are, are, you know, traversing that intersection in what directions, uh, they're traversing it. So we have to go on the actual data in that case, so I can understand why it seems like it's kind of a, you know, a, a, a difference there, maybe unfair, so to speak. But those are the tools that we have based on those two different, you know, situations, so I just wanted to hopefully give you some explanation on that.
But Mr. Selling, it was already said that the inner, the stop sign at Vintage Oak and at Elk Hills. Were put in prior to those developments even going in, they were putting it, they were putting it in anticipation. So was their model done for Parlin Oaks or Veranda?
I would have to defer back to staff, uh, as far as, I believe that there were traffic analysis done for both of those as well. So in a case like those two, and, and as I mentioned at this intersection, vintage joke. You're looking at what's the existing traffic, and then you're looking at what is the development's traffic itself. And then they do another scenario, which is called EPAP, which is existing projects plus approved other projects. So like an Eastview Liberty Ranch has to be incorporated too, and that's where, you know, that additional traffic from the modeling. And again, they're looking out, because that's the only tool we have, the roads aren't built yet, the homes aren't built yet, we don't know necessarily how many trips they're gonna be. So relying, relying on the model, and those models are very, you know, uh, very closely calibrated, uh, even at the regional level by, like the, the council government, so. Uh, it's a, it's a, you know, it's really technical, um, you know, uh, model, if you will, uh, so. Uh, it's broken down pretty well, and like I say, these are licensed traffic engineers, not just civil engineers. That are, that are doing this, and so setting it up, and so that's what they go off of.
Okay, well, this is not so much a question, it's more of a, just a thought. So if we have two minute, if we have a hundred and sixty homes and eighty apartments going up Parlin Oaks, which is two forty. And we had sixty going at Veranda, that's three hundred, so I think it would be fair to, I think it would be fair. To say that those three hundred residents. That will be basically living in those places, probably within the next six months. Well, maybe Parlin Oaks a little longer, but I think I was told about six months last time I asked. Um, it'd be fair to say that any of those people were to go to, say, uh. Um, it'd be fair to say that any of those people were to go to, say, uh, Rayleigh's or uh. You know, to Walmart or to Rite Aid or Tractor Supply or any of these places, there's a high probability they're gonna traverse down Carillion Boulevard. It seems unlikely that based on the ten trips per household that someone just mentioned. You're looking at three hundred, that's three thousand, so you're three thousand trips added to that corridor, and for me, I just. Have a hard time believing that those intersections, the one we're concerned about this evening. Are not going to be impacted by the development, I'm only looking at this from a projecting, like using a, you know, I'm only looking at this, the same criteria that like vintage joke. And Elk Hills were looked at, is what we were projecting, these new homes are gonna impact. I mean, if you're telling me that sixty homes on Veranda justified going from. Uh, a a report that I saw at the Safety Committee four years ago that says. That an Elk Hills and Walnut stop sign by the fire station is not warranted, and sixty homes later, it's warranted. Yeah, I have a hard time believing that you can't say that three hundred homes. Are not gonna make an impact, I I just, I'm I'm still struggling with with the criteria, because again, we're. I mean, I think we need to be proactive and not reactive, and I'm not, I'm not sitting here advocating for stop signs at all these intersections, don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to understand the justification that we're told, like liability might as well, if we put a stop sign in and it doesn't justify by the traffic study. But yet we put stop signs in at these other places, which were not justified by traffic studies, they were justified by some sort of model. But could we, could we, or could we not say if we were to put a stop sign at Lake Canyon? And say, well, you know, future projections of three hundred homes in the area are gonna increase the uh, the traffic flow through that corridor by approximately three thousand, so we think. It was necessary, I mean, I think we have a really strong case there to justify such a such an addition. So.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna stop my comment there and let somebody else go if they had something to say, but if you want to comment, go ahead.
Well, I would just tell you that those whole three thousand trips are not all gonna go down Carillion, um, based on the model, they will be, you know, essentially dispersed. According to what the model predicts, um, so they're not all gonna be, and then that is over the course of a twenty-four hour period. So they're not all there, you know, at the same time kind of thing, so. Um, and and so, you know, with regard to to vintage joke, I don't know without having to look at the study, but. You know, sometimes it is the straw that breaks the camel's back kind of thing, um, and it just depends, um, without, you know, looking at that specific study. But it is, and it is a study, I guess I just want to emphasize, yes, it is based on a model. But I mean, this, this is, like I said, highly calibrated, so it's not just some, somebody's kind of like, yeah, I think it's gonna be this much here kind of thing, so.
Um, I'm not doubting the science, science, scientific, scientific of. I I know, I'm not doubting that, I'm just saying that we're being presented with traffic studies this evening. To apply to intersections that we're talking about possibly doing some safety measures at, but yet intersections in the past, which are on that same corridor. Uh, were used, uh, a different set of measures was applied, and I just think it's kind of apples and oranges, um.
They're still applying it toward the warrants, as Mr. Clarkson said. So whatever that model, you know, is predicting what the traffic distribution is and what the traffic generation is. It's still being applied against the warrants, the same warrants, so it is an apple to apples.
Let let me ask Mr. Clarkson a brief question, in your professional opinion, Mr. Clarkson, if we were to do a traffic study tomorrow. On the intersection of Vintage Oak and Carillion, do you think that it would come back meeting the warrants? This in the same, the same way the traffic study that we're looking at the whole, this two thousand eighteen view is the same. Type of t- traffic study, do you feel in your opinion it would come back and meet the warrants to justify a stop sign, based on that criteria?
You have, you you have a controlled intersection where people over the years have probably tried to avoid it. They've done, they've changed their driving pattern, so so to try to compare one, you know, the the model. With something that is actual. Um, you know, from a model from five years ago, different developments happen, different development has not occurred yet. And and people, once you control an intersection of full control like that, you, traffic patterns change.
Right.
They they just do, people's habits change, so it's it's, you just don't make those comparisons, you go out there and and. And uh, you know, you do the best model you can. You, you know, you know, one of the things that that, you know, you're indicating or or that, you know, we see and and trying to get it clarity is that. It is one in the same when we're, when we have a development coming in, we may say you need to have a water pipe this size. Because it's, you know, for your development, you're gonna put this this much, you know, use this much uh, flow. But it needs to be a little bit bigger because because your development's gonna feed into into this. You know, another development right next door is gonna feed into it, so so when do we oversize the pipe? Do we wait until the new development comes in? Um, and if, as as Mr. Selling said, the straw that breaks the camel's back. When do do we tell them, well, you hang on to your money, you know, that's that's hard to condition that and say, well. In three years after all your homes are built, that's when you're, you know, we're gonna look at everything and see if. If that condition is upheld, we can do that, but then they, then the developer would probably want that on multiple. Items that they have to oversize and that they have to build sooner than is needed. Um, so so we are looking at, the the models are tight, they are, they are tweaked, you know. People review them from all over the place, they they go into it and they say, okay, when this development occurs. This is what your traffic is expected to be out there, and then we we base the mitigation on that.
Was there, was so was there, I maybe I missed when you said it, Mike, so was there a model done regarding Parlin Oaks that you're aware of?
I believe that there was a traffic study done for Parlin Oaks, yes.
Yes, there there was, there was a traffic study done on Parlin Oaks.
We don't have.
I I had reviewed it, yeah.
I believe that we do have it still, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we we keep all that stuff. And it didn't show any additional, uh, uh, you know, it it, there are impacts out there, you know, you're you're generating more cars. But it didn't push any, any uh. Any intersections to needing more controls.
But but a six, but a sixty-house Veranda project did. I'm just want, understand.
We have to look at it to be able to specifically answer that, yeah.
Yeah, that that study happened before I was the city engineer, but um.
Yeah.
You know, it was, it was approved through the planning process, through our process that we review it, and through the city council, so.
Okay, fair fair enough, um, I just want, I just want to change gears on a question, something different, and and feel free, I mean, other other council members want to put their hand up, feel free to, uh. And I will uh, call on someone.
Mayor, have a hands raised online.
Okay, let's go ahead and now hear a public comment then.
It'd be Bill Forrest. Bill, go ahead and mute your mic and, you have five minutes.
Hi, Bill Forrest, uh, Senior Civil Engineer with your Public Works Department, I just wanted to uh, uh, provide a little bit of history. Uh, particularly on the Veranda as well as the stop sign at Vintage Oak and Carillion. Uh, the stop sign that Vintage Oak and Carillion came about when. Elliott was developing their last phase of River Oaks, which was a seventy-unit development, but what they wanted to change was. The tentative map had a vehicle bridge crossing at Norbury. And they wanted to downsize that to just a pedestrian bicycle bridge, and so with that. Uh, it, we required a traffic analysis, and so what that. Traffic analysis essentially changed was as. As the, it changed the subdivision having. Uh, uh, four points of egress with the bridge over at Norbury. It uh, moved it down to three, so uh. Director Selling had talked about, you know, the model includes distribution, um, modeling, and so. Uh, what it showed was by going to um. A pedestrian bicycle bridge at Norbury that pushed a little more traffic. Out to Ambrosio Vintage Oak, Carillion intersection, um. And essentially the intersection fails in the morning peak hour at for the school delivery. Uh, for the Veranda uh, traffic analysis, um, it. Uh, was looked at the Elk Elk Hills and Walnut. That did include uh, anticipated traffic from the Eastview Development to the east.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I've um, have several comments and and just a couple of uh, initial questions. Um, first of all, staff, thank you for putting this uh, comprehensive report together. Um, there's a lot of reading and and pretty interesting, I picked up a couple of different items that I didn't know before. Um, a a couple of questions that I have is. You know, we had a presentation last meeting about the different traffic control devices, um. And i- i- is there a way to go over briefly what we can do to reduce speed? Again, I I go back to um. The complaints of speed uh, are just never-ending, quite honestly. Um, and even in the petition, um, the petitioners talk about Carillion being a raceway. And um, you know, from a, from a vehicle, uh, dr- somebody driving a vehicle, it, if it's a raceway, it certainly. For pedestrians, and there are a lot of pedestrians on. On Carillion uh, regularly, so could you go over just the basics of what what can we do basically to reduce speed? In different areas?
Yeah, so, uh, let me kind of start by, um, you know, just touching on the eighty-fifth percentile, and that's, you know, codified in the vehicle code. Uh, and basically what that means is that, um, you know, normal conditions, dry, sunny, you know. Uh, daylight conditions, uh, eighty-five percent of the drivers on a given roadway. Will drive that segment of roadway at what is deemed a comfortable speed. And so by eighty-five percent driving at or below that speed, whatever that may be, and that's how we set it. So we we do the speed survey, and based on the counts that we get and the speeds that we get, that's what it's based on, and we're allowed within five miles an hour. Either, you know, uh, below or above it, and there's some engineering judgment in that. As I kind of touched on in in the prior uh, uh, presentation. Now, what that means also is there's fifteen percent of the traffic is traveling above that speed. How far above that speed can vary dramatically, um, so. Regardless of what you set a given roadway's speed at, um, and you know, as posted speed. You set it at the, within five miles an hour of the eighty-fifth percentile, there is always. Always going to be fifteen percent of the traffic traveling above that speed, they may be one mile an hour above that speed, they may be fifteen, twenty. Thirty miles an hour above that speed, so just recognize there's always going to be fifteen percent of the traffic speeding. Um, the other thing is, um, a lot of times people perceive speed uh, inaccurately. And I can tell you in my prior uh, position, we would frequently get complaints of speeding and um. We would go out, uh, one of our technicians with a radar gun. And basically, you know, shoot traffic and and ask the person, so you think they're speeding or not? And and I can tell you probably nine times out of ten, they would say, oh, yeah, that that person's going five to ten miles an hour to the speed limit. Well, guess what, they're going like two miles an hour to the speed limit, or sometimes they're even at the speed limit. So people's perception of speed can vary dramatically, and it's often inaccurate, and that's why I think um, maybe the chief. Uh, might weigh in too, but there, some of the motor officers, they go through special training in order to accurately judge speed. Uh, without a radar gun, so we have to keep that in mind too, so there's always gonna be speeders, and then there is a. A serious potential for people misperceiving speed too, so, um, so anyway, hopefully that answers your question.
I guess the other thing that really is is, um. How how do we manage the speed of cars that are in any particular roadway? Whether it be an arterial or a residential, because we do get, I do get quite a few complaints about residential.
Sure, I'll I'll start, and and if Mr. Clarkson wants to jump in, uh, you feel free. Uh, as as you probably saw from the staff report, um, you know, many studies have been done, I mean, traffic engineers are, uh, you know, uh, highway engineers are. Are always studying all kinds of uh, aspects of traffic, and um, and so when when it comes to speed, uh. It, you know, it's it's a very strong uh, uh, correlation that. The perception uh, of the travel lane and and obstacles, fixed objects along the uh, along the roadway. Uh, uh, weigh heavily in the driver's, uh, at least subconscious. As to uh, the, what's a comfortable speed that I was just talking about. So when you narrow the lanes, what what's been borne out in in a lot of these studies. Is when you narrow the lanes, you get a reduced um, speed because there's a sense of confinement to the driver. Uh, and so that's one of the things that we are proposing here to reduce speeds. The other things, and you have to look at different types of roadways on an arterial roadway like this, and I think Councilman Rubennerberg. Uh, was inquiring about speed uh, lumps, and um, uh, yes, and and I think one of the uh, commenters. Talked about, you know, with uh, with Carillion being an arterial road, that is not a um, a solution that we would, and that. Uh, traffic engineers in general would would not recommend for an arterial higher-speed roadway like Carillion. It's really meant for more residential, lower-speed roadways, and the reason is, is if you hit a speed bump at a higher speed, I think, you know. We can all understand that uh, you would have a significant potential to lose control, so what you can do is you can, you can narrow the speeds. Uh, other things like was mentioned, uh, and and again, you know, like them or not, uh, roundabouts have. Have been shown to uh, dramatically reduce speeds while still maintaining a reasonable uh, traffic flow. So uh, other things that have been done are things like what they call chicanes, which is essentially a physical narrowing, sometimes they'll, they'll, they'll. Uh, widen out the uh, the sidewalk area, the curb curbing, uh, and add kind of, uh. If you will, kind of almost like a, just a back and forth motion, you're gonna have to make kind of a wiggle in the road, if you will. Again, these are typically more lower-speed uh, residential-type applications for lowering speed. Uh, but anyway, I'll stop there, I don't know, Mr. Clarkson, if you have anything to add.
Mr. Clarkson. Mike, could you, you were getting some.
Yeah.
Mute your mic, Mike, thank you.
Yeah, I just have a a quick comment is that, is that when, what, this road, I mean. When you look at the Carillion Master Plan, um. You know, it was showing that it costs a lot of money to change the direction of an existing road of what you want, so i- if. If we want this road to where people aren't gonna go over thirty-five miles an hour. Or or say go over forty-five, we'll just take the forty-five, we'll say the speed limit, that's it, forty-five, then we would have to design. Elements into it to reduce the speeds down to thirty-five, because you're still gonna have a group of people that are gonna go well over thirty-five. And so, so it's gonna take a lot of effort and a lot of changes to the road. In order to reduce that speed, but it can be done, I mean, it's it's whatever we want that road to be, we can design it to make it. Uh, be that road, or design and construct it, uh, to be that that size, so so there's multiple ways from having a a mid. Uh, centerline pedestrian um, protection islands out there that actually jut into and narrow, narrow the vision and narrow the lanes. You have bulbouts for pedestrians, you you do a number of things along that whole corridor to to help. Uh, uh, people, or to have people drive safely at a, or feel that that's the speed that they should be driving, which is. Whatever our intent is, I do want to make a point on um, on on one of the. One of the legs of the study that was done back in two eighteen, that we put hoses out there, um, be, and that was between Vintage Oak. And a Walnut Avenue on Carillion, that's a real short section. Uh, eighty-five percentile one direction was forty-six miles an hour. So people are picking up speed really fast, even though you have the, the pedestrian uh, crossings there at 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 the park. Um, you have a stop sign coming up, um. It was, it was surprising, I I thought it would have been lower, but it it was uh, it was forty-six in one direction.
But which explains why we get um, comments from the community about the lights when they're not working for pedestrians, um. Because apparently the drivers aren't even looking for it.
Uh, yeah, they're.
That's, that's, I I'm not suggesting. And they're, that's, that's, I'm not suggesting that we, that we revamp Carillion at all. I just want to make that point. And hey, listen, we have, we have about sixty neighbors in that area that represent probably about forty houses that are concerned about that intersection. And I, and I, and I understand that. And I just want to figure out what the best way to fix it and make people feel more comfortable there. Both pedestrians, bicycles, and I, you know, quite honestly, I'd be interested to see what those numbers look like when you get the opportunity, because, you know, that's an endpoint for a lot of walks for people, or a turnaround point, I should say, is Vauxhall and Carillion, because you get into the county-style roads that any further south. And so I suspect we'll have quite a few. Now, I just want to go through something, because we haven't really touched on it in the council comments. There was information provided by staff today that talked about traffic counts at these different intersections. And it was, it was reported, or at least responded to, that the peak hour of traffic counts, which is the highest hour, going from south, north to south, was Lake Canyon, two hundred and thirty-eight trips, Elk Hills, two seventeen, Vineyard Oak, three forty-three, Vauxhall, fifty-three. And Mike, I guess my question is this, is that based on the two thousand and eighteen study? And if, if that's the case, what do we predict that they would have gone up? Because two thousand and eighteen, the Elliott Development that we were talking about, the additional piece of that, of the seventy or eighty houses, about thirty-five of them were up. So it's about half were fully developed. And, and so, Mike, or can anybody talk to what that might look like today in trying to predict what that, what that might be?
Yeah, I hate to try to predict it. I mean, with COVID and, and, you know, some folks teleworking now and whatnot, it's really hard to say what the volumes might be. I know Mayor Farmer mentioned, you know, or asked kind of hypothetically, what would Vineyard Oak, would it need the warrants now? You know, we, without doing the analysis, it's hard to say. It might, it might not, because obviously Eastview hasn't built, and it was partly predicated on that. So, yeah, that was two thousand and eighteen numbers. And so it's, it would be hard to say what they would look like now without taking into account, so.
If we were to take the two thousand and eighteen study, though, three hundred and forty-three trips does, right?
So that's the peak hour, and the warrant, there's a few different warrants. The first one being three hundred or more in each of eight hours. The second warrant drops down to, I forget the numbers now, but I think it's two hundred and ten or something like that, and a hundred and forty in the, in the minor leg during each of those same eight hours, so.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just reading off the response from staff that was sent out to us today. And it says that based on current volumes, the intersection meets the warrant despite Eastview and Liberty Ranch Development not having started yet. So if that's our standard, or if that's about what the standard is, I think we're pretty close on a few intersections. And, and if we can do something in the interim to make them a little more safer for people, I think we, I think we should do that. The other thing I wanted to talk about that I, that needs to be out in the public, because we all, again, received this information today, were the eighteen traffic collisions in a three-year period that were documented. Now, I'm not talking about, you know, unreported traffic collisions, because I'm sure there's some of those. Some, you know, where somebody almost was in a collision, and that's, I'm sure there are quite a few of those as well. But significant enough to where it was reported there were eighteen over a three-year period. Interestingly, and not, I guess not surprising, though, if you think about it, Twin Cities and and Lake Park were the highest, right? So, which is that real heavy traffic area where people are coming and going all the time. And then as you move further south, I mean, I was surprised to see there was only four at Walnut in the three-year period, and none, or one at Vineyard Oak. And so, you know, it's just, I think when you, when you look at the data and you look at what is reality out there and use a little bit of common sense.
You accidentally muted yourself, Councilmember.
So anyhow, I just think that it's, I think it's pretty interesting. Again, I appreciate the input from the community over, you know, the, through the, through the petition, as well as the two that spoke tonight. I do have a bunch more questions, but I think everyone else pretty much covered everything. I would say that, you know, if you're looking at a variety of things, traffic accidents, you know, speed, I'm sorry, not speed, but traffic volume accidents and pedestrian issues. You have to kind of consider all of that. And so I would, I'm, I'm, I think I'm going to end there. Surprisingly, probably shorter than most would have thought. I just think we need to use the right device for the right problem, and whatever that is. You know, let's, let's do what we can to help folks, certainly at the south end of Carillion, feel a more comfortable leaving their neighborhood. And I want you to know, I mean, there's, there's forty-something houses to the west of Carillion that there's another way out, but it's kind of a long way around. That's their only way out. So I appreciate staff going out and taking the shrubs down. I walk it, I walk that area regularly. And I don't know that it made a huge difference in the visibility and made some difference. But I will say that I pulled out a Vauxhall onto Carillion today, coming east from the west side of Carillion. And I was able to see all the way over until the, to the northbound lanes, there's a sign, a pedestrian crossing sign for Chelsom. I was able to see that, and so the visibility is, is much better than I, than I thought. And so I'll, I'll leave it at that. You know, I'd like to hear that from the rest of my colleagues.
Well said, Rich. I wanted to comment on what Rich was saying about the citizen's perception of a racetrack. I mean, I can see how, you know, what Mike said, too, is that some, some people's perception of speed is different. And so, but I can see how people would think, I mean, if you have forty-five to seven thousand cars, so let's just split that in the middle and say six, five to seven, so it's a little bit higher, but six thousand. If we were to assume that fifteen percent of those cars in the studies, the eighty-fifth percentile was going forty-four miles an hour. So if you say fifteen or doing above, but there's a good chance that maybe some of those fifteen are going below. So just to be conservative, if we were to take seven percent, roughly half of that fifteen, and times that by five thousand, you got four hundred and twenty cars. So it would be safe to say, I think conservatively, that probably four hundred cars are probably speeding. So it would make sense that residents would say, wow, it's a real racetrack, because if you're witnessing, you know, four hundred cars a day, or even two hundred for that matter, going fifty-five miles an hour or sixty, or, I mean, there's probably some on the speed study, they're probably going seventy-five, at least a handful. That, that perception would be easy to, to see. So I just want to state that that's, it's easy to, even though some people watching say, well, if the eighty-four percentile is forty-five, how come all these residents act like there's people speeding when there's clearly not? But there is people speeding, it's just not, you know, it's not the eighty-five percent. I, and with that being said, you know, look, Carillion is arterial. We, I, I, I don't dispute there's people speeding on that road. But I, and would I want to see the speed limit reduced? Well, maybe, but I actually don't think that that's the real problem. I think, for me, the real problem is that this is an arterial, and it works well for what it's supposed to do. It gets cars from point A to point B, you know, north to south, from Seymour to Twin Cities. So I think it's doing its job well. My issue with Carillion is that it splits the east side, which is the largest residential area of the city of Gulf. It basically cuts it right in half. And you have schools, you know, on both, on both sides, actually. So you have people that now have to traverse, children, a lot of the times have to traverse this main arterial. And so for me, that's where my focus is. My focus is that I feel like Carillion Boulevard could be safer. And I don't mean safer because of people speeding. I mean safer because of those places where our families and our kids have to cross. So I wanted to point out, so for example, I was taking some notes today driving down. So some of our crosswalks are Lake Canyon, for example. I think, in my opinion, Lake Canyon is one of the highly used, most highly used crosswalks. So I was sitting there fifteen, forty-five minutes, I was at Lake Canyon and Carillion today. I actually had a clicker, and I was clicking off every time I saw cars go by, and I got about a hundred and ninety-something. So that's seems justified, but you guys said two hundred and something on the peak hour, so I had like a hundred and ninety-two is what I got. And then I had about sixty kids, sixty people crossing in that, in that hour. But the problem is we have lights on the street, and I know I've been told that those, that system doesn't work well, and the lights that are in the pavement, they haven't worked in a couple of years. It's been, I mean, we took Mr. Hines out there when he first came to town. Councilman Van den Berg and I took Mr. Hines out there and showed him that intersection and those crosswalks. And that was when he first came here, and I mean, that's been, I don't know, a year. And then I know it hasn't worked for some time before that, so obviously that's a problem. I mean, they're not functioning like they're supposed to, and if that's the case, and we have, we have a certain type of system in place, and it's not functioning like it should, we need to do something about that. We have a crosswalk at Chelsom that has zero signage. There is no signage at all. The crosswalk is striped, but there's not even a sign blinking or not that says there's a crosswalk. There's nothing. There is at Vauxhall, there's fixed signs with no blinking lights. There is blinking lights at Elk Hills, which is another high-frequented crosswalk for children. So we have really some inconsistencies, and I know some are used more than others. But, you know, what I think really what we're going to need to arrive here is a compromise. I mean, we have citizens that are basically just pleading for us to do something. We have traffic data that's not supporting probably what people are asking for. But we also, I think, all agree that we want our city to be as safe as possible, and we want these people to be safe. And we want them to know that I and the other council members, like Rich mentioned, that we are going to act on their behalf. So I think there needs to be a compromise, and I think, you know, maybe, I understand Pandora's box. If everybody that comes forward asks for a stop sign, and we just say, okay, let's just divvy out stop signs left and right, then you're going to have ten more people come and ask for a stop sign the next week. And it's, and they're going to say, well, why can't we have our stop sign? And I understand that. That's, it makes perfect sense. So I think that's where we come back, we circle back to, you know, a compromise. And, you know, I've taken a lot of notes today, and I know that we're, this is just a discussion. But my thought, this is just my thoughts, and what I would like to see, which I think is a fair compromise, would be enhanced crosswalks at every crosswalk that there is on Carillion Boulevard. On the ones like Lake Canyon and Elk Hills and possibly Vauxhall, that we see full lighted controls, LEDs on both sides, with maybe even the little center one that sticks up from the median that has the flashies on that, so there's a halfway point, because it really catches the driver's attention. When you come over and you see that, it really kind of catches their eye. Even if they're not flashing, all those controls really kind of catch your eye. At the other intersection, the other crosswalks, such as Chelsom, or, or, I think there was one more, maybe that are not used as much, we at least have, you know, really good signage, possibly LEDs on both sides, but maybe not the center median, so, but some much higher level than what we have now. And then possibly at Lake Canyon, I think we should definitely seriously consider a four-way controlled intersection. I mean, today I saw at least two dozen cars creep out into the road before they could pull out at Lake Canyon. I saw children walking. I saw a gentleman with his two Dashing dogs go to cross the road, and someone was coming across, and they had to lock up the brakes and stop, and he had to pull his dogs back, because they almost ran him over. That was in the instant, that was just in the hour that I was there. So I feel that that intersection, because of the high use of the children and the pedestrians, I think that we should consider something there. But again, I'm just, you know, I'm not saying I'm going to dig my heels in and just, you know, say that or nothing. But, but I also think things like what Rich mentioned, and I think the city manager suggested, is some, some, some caution, you know, like coming over that ridge that we talked about at Vauxhall. Maybe as you're coming over that ridge, we have something that says, you know, caution ahead with the flashing yellow that says danger, you know, danger ahead, or just to kind of catch people's eye that they start being vigilant as they come over that rise. So I think there's some compromise we can get here. But my focus is really just to enhance the maximum safety for people traversing that main arterial. And I think that as these new subdivisions come in, like Parlin Oaks and Veranda, and, and, you know, Greenwood Cottages, and, you know, and if the corner, the other corner across from Parlin Oaks gets developed at some point, I mean, we're going to, we're going to have more people traversing that, going to school. We're going to have more kids, we're going to have more pedestrians, and it's just only going to increase. I think we need to be proactive and not reactive. I'd hate to just say, let's wait and see. And then we do have a fatality or a kid get hit. I know we've been lucky, and knock on wood, we haven't had that yet, but I'd hate for that to happen. And I would feel really, really, I don't know if I could really live with that, knowing that I didn't push as hard as I could for some, some higher safety measures. So these are just ideas I'm throwing out there that we, that I would like to see considered. I would love to hear what my other council members have to say. Rich has your hand up, sir, so go ahead.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on that, listen, I, I, I think there's a balance between safety and distracting drivers. So I just want to throw that out there, too. And then the other piece is, is we have to be cognizant of whatever we decide is going to happen at any of these intersections, quite honestly. We have to decide what, what is going to be the best for the long term. And, you know, I was quite surprised, and, and, you know, I just go back to the data, the traffic collisions, reported traffic collisions, eighteen in three years. I was expecting eighteen a year for three years. And, you know, so it, it's just, and again, I'm up and down Carillion regularly, from Lake Park, actually Twin Cities, to Vauxhall, many days of the week. And so, so anyhow, I just want to throw that out there. I like the, in the staff report, staff's recommendations about reducing the travel lanes. I think that will do quite well with reducing speeds. And, and then also maybe some flashing beacons, especially at that, that hill. Again, I'll have to say, with the recent removal of the vegetation around the Vauxhall area, I was able to see pretty far up. Now, I couldn't do it behind the limit line, meaning the, the crosswalk line. I did have to get out into the crosswalk to be able to see, but I was able to see pretty far up. And, and again, my experience has been during both daylight hours and before the daylight comes up during, during the early, early mornings. So I do like staff's recommendation on, on reducing the street lane widths and increasing the bike lane. And I'd also asked a couple of questions regarding reducing the, the lanes and, and what width is appropriate, and it sounds like it's ten feet per lane, and ours are mostly twelve to thirteen. So anyhow, I just throw that out as, as a point of discussion. And, but I appreciate the, the interest that folks have taken on Carillion, especially up at the Lake Canyon area where I get complaints pretty regularly, so.
All right, thank you, sir. Believe Jay, you had your hand up next, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, I mean, all the conversation and education is excellent. Is this going to move to some kind of action item at the next meeting or the meeting following? You know, so at some point, we have to do something. That's all I have.
Mr. Pappan, I'll go ahead.
Well, yeah, I would kind of echo what Mr. Van den Berg said right there, and, and what Mr. Lozano said, that, you know, I appreciate everybody bringing this forward, appreciate our conversation about it. And I think that the staff's recommendations are a great place to start. I think if those two things are done, they address a lot of what we're talking about and gets us well on our way to making that a safer, better corridor. And then, since this is kind of my wrap-up on traffic safety, traffic education month, all this aside, what kind of started this off, as I recall, were some reckless drivers, possibly Were some reckless drivers, possibly street racers. Crashing. And those are people. That don't respect the community. They don't have any regard for. Any of the things that we're talking about here. And the bottom line with them is um, it comes down to enforcement. And the sooner we can get, you know, another traffic officer out and. I think possibly get um. Some training for our officers. On vehicle equipment. Because a lot of those, you know, people that are racing, they don't care about any of this, have those type of vehicles. And um. Those things turn into the side shows that we hear about, so. Um, you know, we need to, we need to focus on this, but. Well, I mean, we also need to focus on getting the enforcement part uh where it needs to be. And that's all I have.
Well said, well said. I totally agree with the enforcement. Um, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for everybody, you know, all the council member have the same concern. And every council member have a big concern about the citizens uh their well. And we do understand that uh. The study does does not meet the criteria with the stop sign. But certainly, I I I will move forward to on a lake canyon, what staff can do any kind of stop sign in 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 considering these developments. On Vax Hall, uh. I I I know there is, I I that's why I say even in the last meeting and even I. Talked to Mister Heinz when I give the petition, I know. The the traffic is not there in order to stop sign, but I will ask uh Mister Selling. If he can do something to the citizen feel safe, like an engineering judgment. Uh, what he thinking? And I also like to, you know, ask my other council member uh to direct staff to conduct some additional analysis. In-house. And propose additional, a pro- alternative solution. To bring that item as the action. So then we can take the action, all the council members, it can be have a time when we can done in 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 a future. Um, Mister Selling.
Yeah, so what I would propose is is as recommended in in the staffing board would be. The thing with traffic is unless you've got, you know, a clear-cut issue that needs to be addressed. And from our analysis so far, we haven't really seen that other than the speeding. Uh, that we would propose to to narrow the lanes. And I think with regard to, I guess I want to make clarification out at Lake Canyon. The impavement lights that is on us, we do have a um. It on our list to take those impavement lights out because they haven't functioned for a while. But there is a what we call a rectangular rapid flashing beacon system in place. And I think what's causing the problem really is. People are pushing the button and looking at the impavement lights and expecting them to light up and they're not seeing it. So they're thinking that the system is not functioning, but actually the rapid flashing beacon. Above is functioning. So we uh we will be taking out those impavement lights. Like I said, it's it's been on our our list. We've. Had some staffing issues and we've had some other. Uh, more urgent matters, so to speak, keeping our streets group pretty busy, but uh I can tell you it will. It will be uh happening soon uh to remove those. Um, but to narrow the lanes and then as Mister Clarkson noted. Is to do a follow-up speed survey to see if we can reduce the posted speed, you know, maybe five. Who knows, maybe ten, I doubt it, but I would say it might drop from forty-five to forty posted. Uh, and uh, you know, and then uh see what that uh provides because the volumes, quite frankly, on Corillian are not. Heavy enough. That um there are, you know, a lack of what we call gaps in the traffic. Or vehicles and or pedestrians or or uh or bicyclists to. You know, to make a uh make a movement across or 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 turn into. Corillian, so um but again, we can look at uh specific intersections, do specific counts. Uh, we can, you know, go to that next level, if you will, just to see really what the data is and if there is something. It can be done if we're close, uh, you know, perhaps we can use some engineering judgment to to get there. But again, we would have to, you know, do you kind of take it to another level as far as analysis, so.
Uh, thank you, Mister Selling. And then the same thing, you know, engineering judgment. Uh, you know, sometimes structure of the road, it does not going to meet the traffic, what the best we can do for the citizen. Do we feel safe? And that's I I think all council member, they want that. And I like to bring this back if all the council already bring as an action item, so we can take it. And a different alternatives.
I I would, I I would, I want to clarify what you're kind of um. Uh, asking for, I've seen some, I've heard some suggestions from. Uh, Mister Papinow and Mister Lozano about the their interest in narrowing the lanes, um, which I I would be in favor of. Um, there's been other suggestions, you know, the ones that I made about enhancing the crosswalks. Um, Mister Sandu is um suggesting we, you know, do an up-to-date analysis. I think somebody else suggested that as well. Um, my concern would be if we come back. If we direct staff to do another study and they come back. And let's say the eighty-fifth percentile increases from forty-four to. Uh, you know, forty-nine. We're still within five miles per hour of the speed limit and nothing will change. We're gonna, that would that would clarify that forty-five is the appropriate speed. I feel like we're kind of just kicking a can down the road. I want to remind everybody at the beginning of this discussion. That somebody said that we not, we shouldn't take a half-assed approach to this, and I completely agree with that. We voted on the Corillian plan. To have a shovel-ready. You know, have that have things shovel-ready for this corridor. Should we want to do any specific enhancements? There is clearly a need for enhancements. There's clearly a a citizen cry out for such enhancements. So I don't want to just drag our feet on this and six months from now still be. You know, meandering around trying to figure out what I would support. Another traffic study, current one. However, I'm I'm reluctant, I'm skeptical that it will that will change. And for me. Whether it changes or whatever, I'm not going to change my view on how I feel about doing something with these intersections. Again, I'm willing to compromise. I am definitely willing to compromise. I'm not crying out to. Throw all kinds of stop signs everywhere, but. Where it's very reasonable. Um, so. If the consensus of this council would be that we want staff to come back. With uh up-to-date traffic analysis. With keeping in mind that we're looking to narrow the road. Of the lanes, I'm sorry. Um, and possibly do some and crosswalk enhancement. Uh, that's what I would. Be in favor of. I don't know, um, Mister Sandu, Mister Papinow.
Uh, Mister Mayor. May I have a minute? And you know, my main is. Is let's go back to staff, they can be more looking at, they already heard all the comment what we did. As soon as maybe next or or after that, bring them back as a action item. And a different alternative staff might be thinking a little bit different terms, so we can make a decision. That's why I'm asking, I'm not asking six months, I'm asking immediately. Bring him back as an action item. This is not an action item. And I believe uh Mister Heinz knows this is not an action.
Okay, Mister Papinow.
Yeah, I just want to clarify between what you're saying and my understanding of what Mister Selling was saying. Was, I understood him to be saying. They recommend doing the lane narrowing. And then doing. The survey. Because we'd likely come back lower. I I think you were correct. If we do a survey right now. It's gonna go up if anything, so. And you know, I I just wanted to clarify that that was. Of the recommendations that staff came with. Um, you know, items one and two. Put in place and then do a survey and I think we're gonna. Better place, probably with a lower speed and certainly a safer road. So that's just to clarify what I was asking for. And certainly. The funding's got to come from somewhere, but sooner sooner than later.
Councilman, I thank you for clarifying that. You I probably misunderstood that and 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 I saw Mike nodding his head, so uh I understand that. I'm going to let uh Councilman Vanderburgh comment.
Thank you, Mayor Farmer. Uh, I agree with uh Councilman Papinow completely that. We should take all of the traffic reduction control measures first, if we before we do an analysis, otherwise you, in my opinion, you're doing it backwards.
And and I and I totally understand. Uh, again, um, let's just say for for theoretical, we were going to um. Give direction to proceed forward with uh bringing an action item back next as soon as possible. Um, to uh narrow the lanes. Um, and then put up maybe, you know, some flashing speed signs to then, you know, try to um, the idea would be to try to bring the speed down and then do a another analysis. To see if we could, how that comes back. But if we do that, we're still not, in my opinion, addressing. One of my biggest concerns, which is the crosswalk safety. Um, that's just completely left out. Another thing is I don't know if the people on Vauxhall. Who signed a petition demanding a stop sign are going to just. Be satisfied with. The compromises of we're going to just narrow the lanes and then we're going to do a traffic study. I mean, what timeframe are we talking about? I mean, realistically, if we were to bring this back as an action item next meeting. Just theoretical, and I know that we have really busy agendas. But if we were to, if we were to be able to bring this back as an action item and we were to approve it. To do the narrowing of the lane and then do the re-traffic study, what kind of timeframe do you think we're looking at, Mike?
Yeah, and and I'll defer to Mister Clarkson, so I don't commit him to something unreasonable, but my uh expectation would be. You know, we're approaching the winter months and we can't really do any restriping, you know, uh in inclement weather conditions now. If it's a dry year. You know, we can get an uh a solid weather window. Um, and I think, you know, it's probably going to take him, I don't know, I'm going to say a couple of months. To put together a a bid package and and bid it and uh we do have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we budgeted for. You know, some enhancements to Corillian, uh, and so we'll have to get an engineer's estimate, but. All that said, uh, typical bid times and everything, uh, we could probably. Be able to uh go to construction, I would say, you know, February timeframe, uh, and then again, weather permitting. Uh, for the restriping. Um, and then, you know, you you basically would probably want to wait. Oh, probably at least a month or so, uh, just for traffic patterns to adjust to the new striping. Uh, and then do your speed survey, so uh but I'll defer to Mister Clarkson if he wants to modify that estimated schedule.
Mister Clarkson.
No, that sounds fine. That sounds fine.
So we're talking probably probably in spring, like optimum. Springtime, April, something.
But yeah, weather permitting, yeah.
And then we'd have to do this traffic analysis, bring it back, see what the result of that is and then decide what further action. So. You know, we're basically into summer, you know, the school year, the whole school year. I I just. And I know things take time and you got to do it the proper way, but I just. I again, uh. It's my only concern.
What I would, what I would, uh, you know, just make the council aware of, Mayor, is that. The additional analysis on the intersections could be running concurrent. While we're preparing the bid package and whatnot for the restriping project.
Andrew has his hand up. Um, Mister, I'm Vice Mayor, I'm going to let the city manager make a comment real quick because he's been waiting for me.
So I wanted to, first of all, commend you all. Excellent conversation. Um. Excellent solutions. So. What um what I would propose is in line with everyone else's proposal. Is that you give Public Works the opportunity to come up with the restriping. And sort of the redesign of Corillian with the intent of bringing down the speeds. Um, even though we're still working on. Uh, the restriping and the bidding process. We still may be able and and Mike and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we still may be able to get trailers out there. To at least start warning folks about the speeds. And to get them to slow down. Now, um, one of the things that we had a discussion about Public Works and I this week is over in my former city. We also had um slowdown signs, but these signs had red and blue lights. Attached to them and that always seemed to get everyone's attention. There's a city to the north of us that also has a trailer with red and blue lights. So I'm just saying that there are options for these trailers that will definitely get attention. The other thing in addition, uh, while we're waiting for the restriping plan and the bidding process to go through is that perhaps. Uh, Chief Kalanowski and his team. Can figure out a way to provide some, uh, how should I say, additional enforcement? And monitoring of the Corillian area. I realize that they have an entire city. Uh, to worry about, but perhaps. We can figure out some way for Corillian to be um a focus of the Galt PD. And that should also slow down. Speeds as well, because right now we're doing, I think it's educational enforcement. And or informational enforcement, but at some point we're going to turn that off and we're just going to do. Enforcement. And so that should hopefully get everyone's attention as well. So. Mister Mayor and and council members, so what I would recommend. Is that we continue with the restriping and let uh Director Selling and City Engineer Clarkson go through their process for restriping and. The things that we talked about, but in the interim. Um, we can bring on the trailers. Um, we can also have the Galt PD take uh more focus and laser-like um. A position on Corillian. Um, as resources permit.
Would it, would it be too much to ask in that interim be, which wouldn't be contingent on weather? To get the crosswalk at Chelsom, the same signage that's at Vauxhall, which is just the simple metal signs. That says that there's a crosswalk and there's nothing at Chelsom at all.
Okay.
Yeah, that's 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 easily doable.
Fixed, well. I guess if the lights aren't working, taking them out, it's not going to really change much on the Lake Canyon, but I just would like to. Distance in the crosswalks, I think putting those signs up is not going to uh be a big deal and it's not going to be weather conducive, but I I like your ideas, uh, Mister City Manager. Um, um, you know, I obviously, I I think we're making a big compromise here. Um, I want to see what Vice Mayor has to say here. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mister Mayor, uh, what we proposing on the Vax Hall, you know, there is a flashing light, I think. That we need to expedite, we don't need to wait for us, you know, the traffic study. That's why we are proposing on the Vax Hall, right?
Can we get Director Selling and and um City Engineer Clarkson to comment on that, please?
So so as as the, and I'll defer to Clarkson here in a second, but um as he noted earlier in his presentation. Um, that we've got a camera out there now and so we're collecting data. On it, I I can tell you that as far as the flashing beacons go, they typically go by. Uh, a warrant, this essentially the same, the same warrant that uh that I mentioned before. There's two, one for school crossings, one for ped crossings. Um, and so we would want to collect that data to see if it meets it because again. Uh, if you place, you know, a a device like that and I understand that the vice mayor's concerned. But there may be some other options that um I think was mentioned, uh, there's there's a sign for like a hill grade kind of thing, something like that. Uh, with maybe a flasher that we can look into, uh, that wouldn't require a warrant necessarily, so. Um, so I would want to collect data though before, you know, we would uh. We would look at at putting a flashing beacon out there, so.
So so you're saying there is, there is probably something minimal we could do. In the interim, uh, that would require a warrant in the Vauxhall area in addition to uh. Uh, appeasing uh the Vice Mayor hopefully and uh the citizens by doing the trailers that the city manager suggested with the. Slowdown, you know, stuff and um. And then, so those measures could be something we can implement. And then uh work towards the uh striping process and all that. Is that my, is that something, is that reasonable? Mister City Manager.
I think it's reasonable as long as the data collection that they're currently performing on Vauxhall. Um, supports where we're, what the direction is. My my only concern is it's that is is, and you all know that I I am concerned about our citizen safety. First and foremost, I'm also concerned about making sure that whatever measures we put in place that require a warrant. Meet those standards. Now, if there are things that we can do that don't require a warrant. That can also meet and or help us meet some of our. Needs, then I'm definitely open to that. So I'm interested to see the data from the camera. That Director Selling and uh City Engineer Clarkson. Has right now on Vauxhall. Uh, Mike, is that, that's correct, it's on Vauxhall? So I'm very interested in seeing the data that's collected. Mike, what what's a good? What's a good sort of period of time? I'm sorry, Director Selling, uh, what's a good period of time uh for us to collect data for it's actually? For it to actually be valid?
Typically, you'd want to do it a minimum of seven days to get, you know, the full range of what happens on, you know, weekdays versus weekend days kind of thing. Um, but but. We've typically done like two weeks uh is what we would look at typically, so um. Uh, I'll defer to Mister Clarkson if uh. If he has anything to add on that or has a different perspective.
No, two weeks is is what the standard that I've been using. No, two weeks is, is what the standard that I've been using.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, what I would propose. Is that we let Public Works do the data collection on Vauxhall. And Vice Mayor Sandu, this is also for you and and the residents there at Vauxhall. Is that we let the the Public Works Department uh collect the data. And let's see where the data or what instrument that data points us to. Um, I will report back to council. Um, at the next council meeting, cause I believe that's two weeks away. And or Mark, um, I'm sorry, uh City Engineer Clarkson and Director Selling, is that? Is that okay, or is that still cutting it too close?
You, you repeat, I started making a note, so I didn't catch up.
What I would like to do is come back to the mayor and city council at the next council meeting. And at minimum, report out. On, okay, here's the data that we're seeing so far. From Vauxhall and Corillian. And here's sort of the. Solution that it's pointing to. Um, if it's a situation where it's still falling short of the warrants, perhaps there's some interim step. That we can use. But Mr. Mayor and and the council members and Vice Mayor Sandu and to the residents of Vauxhall, we can at least. Um, I don't know if there's any. Uh, anything prohibiting us from at least rolling trailers. Um, into that area and to increase the enforcement in that area. And Chief Kalinowski, if there's any concerns about that, please let us know. Um, but I want to. Make sure that the public understands and that the mayor and the council understand that this isn't a. Let's talk about it now and let's hear about it again in six months, this is an ongoing thing. And so, so the folks on Vauxhall and all the folks up and down Corillian, we hear you. And so this is gonna be an ongoing situation. As we, as we stated in our staff report back in June fifteenth. Um, so. That's the way I see things, and that's the way I would like to approach it, subject to the advice. Of our Public Works Director and our, and our new police chief. Ryan, did you, uh Chief Kalinowski, did you wanna make a statement?
Uh, no, Mr. City Manager, I just wanted you to know that I was listening and I was aware of the directive and will follow along.
All right, thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, uh would you be okay with uh having that data brought back to us at the next council meeting? And then we can assess what that data tells us, and then we can decide on uh what direction we, the council would like to, to go with. At that point regarding what to implement and what, would, would that be okay with you?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I I I don't have a problem, I'm okay, but they wanna make sure when they look at the data. You know, this is the structure of the road, I just wanna make sure. You know, the Public Works Director, they look at, he he had to look map, that data might be well not sport. You know, it is, is the traffic, so they also have to consider. You know, the structure of the road, this is a blind spot, and I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, I I think it's been understood that we're not, it's not been said that we're going to. Bring the data back, and if the data justifies doing something, and if it doesn't, we're not gonna do anything, I think what we're doing is the council's asking for. To see that data so that we can uh and then have Public Works make some recommendations on what tools they could use. If any, whether warranted or some that are not warranted, that don't require warrants, to try to appease. Uh, the safety issue at Cor- at Vauxhall and and possibly other intersections, and then we can kinda proceed from there with our striding of the road. And all these other things, that, that's what I'm understanding, I think, so. Uh, that's my feeling, is it, am I, am I, is that clear, Mr. Heinz, is that?
That's, that's clear to me, uh the council can also have the option at the next meeting of just looking at the data and. And you also have the option of saying, okay, give it two more weeks, let's see what, let's see what two more weeks yields. And if it comes back more the same, then we know that our sample. Is, is valid, and um and and valid not only in the council's eyes, but. Valid in the public and in Public Works's eyes, so you also have that option. At the next council meeting, but I wanna let, make sure you all know that while all these studies and data collection are going on. We are still taking action on Corillian. And um, and just make sure that the folks out there watching. Um, understand that we hear them, and we will take the action and. And it's may, may, may require that we go get a couple more new trailers. Um, and that's okay, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars appropriated for these things, and we'll. We'll um, we'll do what we can to uh fortify um Corillian.
Okay, Councilman Vanderburg, um. Do you have? You know, comment about this? You're muted, sir, you're muted.
What action items will appear on the next agenda for Corillian Boulevard?
I believe the action item will be a uh authority to re-stripe. And authority to uh narrow those lanes. Um, and there will be authority to, I don't think we need the authority to do the trailer. But I do think that we need to look at restriping and going through that process of getting a contractor on board. To do the restriping, um, so I think that's the only action item that's needed, although. Director Selling, we already have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars appropriated. What, how much do you think this restriping will actually cost?
I would defer to Mr. Clarkson, I I believe it's probably insufficient.
Okay, all right, then we will come back with a cost estimate for restriping. And we will probably ask, be asking for an additional appropriation. Uh, for the restriping, cause clearly, based on what Director Selling is saying, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Isn't enough, and we're gonna have to go into the general fund balance to get this done.
I would also, I would also like to see any signage that doesn't require warrants as an option. Those type of items that we mentioned earlier.
Mm-hmm, okay, Director Selling, your thoughts?
So, yeah, maybe just a word of caution here on signs too, because you can. Get what we call sign pollution, so you don't wanna be distracting the driver with so many signs that they're. You know, uh not paying attention to what's going on in in the uh in the environment, so. Um, so yes, there are things that we can do, and whether that's may even require, you know, adjustment of other existing signs or whatnot, or prioritizing. Um, that's something that we'll, we'll definitely have to look at if we are gonna place some additional signings, so.
And so, uh Councilmember Vandenberg, uh once Public Works does that analysis. Then that will, our recommendations will also appear as an action item as well. So you'll see restriping and signs that don't affect or it won't create too much sign pollution. Um, but that Public Works actually recommends, um now with. With our initial plans for Corillian. The directive we got from council was when you look at modifying one, one particular intersection. It is supposed to be modified with the other ten intersections in mind. And so. When Director Selling s- speaks that, the signage that we. Put on the action item. The new signage, that some of the old signage may be affected as well and may need to be modified. Uh, Director Selling, is that, do I have that correct?
Yes, that's accurate, yeah, as, as, as you noted, uh. You can't just, you know, look at it with blinders on at the intersection, you have to look at the corridors as a whole, particularly on an arterial, so where you're trying to move traffic, so.
So, Councilmember Vandenberg, that's, that's what you'll see, I did not want you or the other members of the council to be surprised by. Wait a minute, why are we changing this sign? And it's because we've had to look at the whole stretch. Um, as per our plan, the whole stretch is one stretch. But so, Councilmember Vandenberg, those are the, the items that we. Plan on having as agenda uh action items at the next meeting, so there's the restriping. There is the uh possible signage. Uh, there will probably be some appropriations for additional paint, because we're widening the bike lanes. And so those have to be green, um, so, you know, so those are, those are things that we wanna bring before you now. And once we get clearance to do that, then the Public Works Department can go through their bidding process. And, and, and then we can go through the survey process, once all that's in place. And then we will come back to you after all that's in place, most likely March, April. And with a new engineering study, with all of these controls in place. And let's see where that study is versus where it is. Now, uh the study from twenty eighteen. And, but the whole, the whole measure here is to slow down traffic. On Corillian. So between the trailers, the restriping, the signage. Um, making sure the vegetation on all the intersections. Is, is appropriate. We, we think that's a good place to start, we'll do the survey and we'll see where the survey points us.
I think it's important to note, uh Mr. Vandenberg, that uh. Next meeting, when the stuff comes back, um, should the council or any member feel the need to. You know, ask for a different, you know, additional direction to slightly modify what. Is being suggested, there, there will be an opportunity to do that, um, I know it's not. Wouldn't be so, so much as an action item where, but it, but there's always, there's always opportunity for. Uh, suggested direction, uh. And to see what your fellow council members think, so I'm just wanna throw that out there, that this doesn't mean that if. You know, like, for example, for me, there's no discussion about, you know, Lake Canyon crosswalk, which I'm very. Out of it about, but I do understand that once this data comes back in two weeks and we analyze all this and. Mike and his team say, well, this is what we think we could do, we could put this sign here, it doesn't need a warrant. We could definitely put some speed, we can do this or that, or the data from Vauxhall suggests that we could probably do this. And we might be very happy with the suggestions, or we may not be very happy, and we could maybe a- ask something else, so I just wanna remind, uh you know, the Vice Mayor and. Councilman Vandenberg that um. This doesn't mean that uh we're not, you know, getting some things that we are passionate about. Councilman Vander, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, having, having said that, I'm glad you brought that up, cause that's exactly what I was gonna say, I think we, I mean, for tonight, it's just my humble opinion. I think we beat this dead horse a little bit, um, and I think staff knows exactly where we're coming from and. And uh unless, I, I think we may, I think we should move on to the, to the next item.
So is it fair to say we have? An understanding of where we're at with this right now and, yes, next meeting?
I believe so, sir, and I think Director Selling has a final word, hopefully.
Yeah, well, I wanted to clarify, we've got one camera and it's on Vauxhall now, um, so in these two weeks. We would only be looking at the data for that, so to do. Um, Lake Canyon, you know, we would need a, an additional. Time to put the camera up and monitor what's going on there as well, so. I just didn't want the mayor to think, well, what about Lake Canyon, well. We need, you know, another two weeks to, to look at that, so, um.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I.
Okay.
I wanna see something done there, but I think in the spirit of the petition that came from the citizens of Vauxhall. I would like relinquish my focus onto Vauxhall for the, for the exact, for the moment, for the interim, you know, the immediate moment, so.
Okay, understood, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
And so, Mayor, perhaps if, uh given, um Director Selling or and uh City Engineer Clarkson. After we're done with the camera on Vauxhall, perhaps we can move it up to Lake Canyon. And start collecting dat- data there.
Okay, do we have any uh further, do we have any public comment, do we have any hands raised on this item before we move on? Rose?
Not have any hands raised online.
Okay, you wish to make a public comment, you may do so now, we're only gonna give you moments here. To uh allow you to do that, you can press star nine if you're on the phone, or you can raise your hand if you are logged into Zoom. So, give you a few more seconds here to do that. All right, any additional comment?
No additional hands raised.
Okay. Moving on to our next item from the Public Works Department, item H three, it's gonna be a solid ordinance amendment, Mr. Selling.
Thank you, bear with me a second here while I switch gears on the presentation. Apologies, I did run to the printer really fast, bear with me a second. Okay, hopefully you can see that. So, good evening again, Mayor and council members, uh this item is to introduce an amendment to the city's solid waste ordinance. Necessary to comply with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Or what we commonly refer to as SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, this presentation will largely be a repeat of what I presented at the last council meeting, but it's important to go over. What's driving this amendment. As it will have significant changes for us all in how we think about and separate the waste we generate. So the city's solid waste ordinance is located in Title Eight of the Galt Municipal Code, and more specifically, Chapter Eight, dot one six, dot zero one zero through. Eight dot uh one six, dot three five zero. It was updated earlier this year to address two other mandates, AB three forty-one for commercial recycling. And AB eighteen twenty-six for commercial organics recycling. Generally, it provides the overall policy framework for various aspects related to solid waste. Some of which are listed here at the bottom of the slide. So why does the ordinance need to be amended if we just updated it back in March? The answer is SB thirteen eighty-three, it's a major change in how solid waste is viewed and processed. Back in March, we didn't have a sufficient understanding of how SB thirteen eighty-three would be implemented by the state. And there were a lot of clarifications that needed to be addressed. We've been working with other agencies in the area along with CalRecycle. And attending various informational webinars to resolve these issues. Specifically, SB thirteen eighty-three requires agencies to have a compliant ordinance. SB thirteen eighty-three's essential purpose is to reduce air emissions of greenhouse gases. As it approach, as its approach, uh and its approach to this is two-pronged. Uh, first, as landfills are the major source of these greenhouse gases created from the organics breaking down over time. Emissions can be reduced by removing the amount of organics in the waste stream. And then the second prong is by recovering edible food and distributing it to those in need. Uh, a portion of the organics never enters into the wa- waste stream. Additionally, for the city to enforce these requirements, it's necessary to update our ordinance. And then lastly, as SB thirteen eighty-three gives CalRecycle enforcement authority over local agencies. Updating the city's ordinance is necessary to avoid potential violations, penalties, and corrective action measures from the state. This slide is a bit redundant, as I've already touched on the other prior, uh other prior mandates. Uh, which were addressed in the March ordinance update, so I'll jump down to SB thirteen eighty-three, where it says this ordinance amendment. Uh. As the other uh mandates largely address the commercial side, uh and and recycling, and then also the commercial side. Uh, organics recycling, thirteen eighty-three takes it a step further. Uh, and mandates it for uh for residential as well. So the end goal of thirteen eighty-three is for the state of California as a whole. To achieve a seventy-five percent reduction in the amount of organics landfill by twenty twenty-five. The basis for this determination is two thousand and fourteen, where twenty-three million tons of organics were landfilled. So that means, uh we as a state need to divert seventeen million tons of organics annually by twenty twenty-five. So I wanna note that unlike prior mandates, uh there are no agency-specific goals or targets, meaning City of Galt. Doesn't have a set number of tons that it has to divert. With regard to outreach on these mandates, uh there were a couple of presentations in two thousand and nineteen. And then two others earlier this year, and then a third at the last council meeting. City staff has sent letters back in two thousand and twenty, uh in December, to all the commercial businesses. And also informed the chamber at that time. And then there were also letters sent to affected commercial customers in both July and August, related to the other uh two mandates, uh. And uh, and then also, uh the city's been working with Cal Waste uh to uh to identify. These commercial customers, to notify them of these mandates. And, and will continue to use our, our city's social media and website. Uh, and also advise through the city billings uh of these coming requirements. Uh, we continue to regularly meet with Cal Waste staff to assist with getting. Commercial accounts compliant, as well as how residential organics recycling will be conducted. And also in meeting uh the city's organics procurement requirements. So as far as the changes we need to make in our ordinance. So as far as the changes we need to make in our ordinance, uh, this is the general list. Can I have that right? Yeah. We need to add and define a few terms like food recovery and food generators. We also need to include reference to the organics containers for residential, multifamily, and commercial. Of course, we need to reference the organics waste services. And along with adding the terms, we need to reflect the requirements for food generators and food recovery services. Then there's also the requirements for processing of the organics. And as there are special aspects to transporting organic waste, we need to reflect these requirements for any self hauling as well. Uh, lastly, uh, while it's not shown on the slide here, but we need to include language regarding inspections and investigations. So as far as next steps from here, as previously noted, uh, an ordinance requires two steps. Uh, so pending tonight's action, it will be on the next council agenda for approval, and then if approved, become effective thirty days thereafter. That effective date would be December sixteenth, which will allow for the city to be compliant prior to the January first deadline. Of course, outreach and education will continue and will well into next year as, as these programs come online and are implemented. Uh, and then uh Cal Waste uh will determine how it will conduct this residential organics recycling and deliver the carts or containers, depending on uh what approach they take. City staff will continue to review and process in waivers or applications for self hauling. Uh, and I think we've received around thirty or so so far. Uh, and then uh the city's website has largely been updated to provide information on these mandates and includes the waiver and self haul uh forms for people to fill out if they so choose. And then there's also uh informational links uh and resources to Cal Recycle's uh website too. Uh, I did note it on the slide that there's a couple other uh things that, that are going on too, and, and that includes uh staff developing the food recovery and organics procurement programs. And then relative to other uh, the other, there's another solid waste item on there, and as you all know, the ad hoc committee. Uh, if that's formed, uh, we'll be helping to update the franchise agreement as applicable. Uh, that is essentially for residential organics, um establishing the residential organics rate and any rate rebalancing, as was mentioned in previous meetings. And then going into twenty twenty-two, staff and Cal Waste will begin implementing the programs noted and working cooperatively to monitor the programs and reporting to Cal Recycle to ensure the city's compliance. So Mayor and council members, this concludes my presentation, and I'm available along with Mr. Splendorio. Uh, if there's any legal aspects to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Selling, for not getting this to you before tonight's meeting, but um, I did notice in um Exhibit A, which is our definitions, there's a definition for green waste, which is our, you know, your standard green waste. And then down on um under you, it says organic waste, and it also includes green waste. I think I remember before uh you mentioning, or maybe it was um our, our service provider mentioning that the possibility of collecting organic and green waste in the same bin is a possibility for residential.
That's correct, council member. There's three options really that we're looking at is one would be to co-mingle it, like you just mentioned, meaning mixing the food waste in with the green waste and collecting it every week. The second option is, is a um type of bag system uh where the food waste uh would be bagged, and then that bag put in that green waste carton, so it could be easily separated when they, uh, when they take it to their uh facility. And then the third one would be to have an actual fourth cart, so a separate cart just for uh organics waste, so.
But at any rate, that would have to be collected weekly like the trash, correct?
Absolutely, yes. Uh, state law mandates that the organics have to, well, the food waste organics have to be collected weekly, yes.
So, so really the value of the split body truck that just came into, to uh was shown very well just now, right? Because, oh my gosh, okay. Um, yeah, that's all I have. I, I appreciate the, uh, the, the, um, the report and uh, and we've been over this several times and, and I feel comfortable with where the direction we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Councilman Lozano. Uh, Mike, I have a couple of questions for you. One, actually I had three, but one of them, the, the, um, my fellow council member just asked about the weekly pickup. I want to ensure we're going to be big enough food waste every week and not letting that stuff sit because that was a concern. Um, I personally would not be a fan of the fourth cart. I think you're going to really run into some logistics problems with that. I know that, you know, this is still up for discussion and Cal Waste hasn't decided yet, but um, you know, a lot of people have just trouble, having trouble just having the carts they have now, especially with all the businesses that have went from dumpsters to carts. I mean, just in the vicinity of my business, we have a ton of carts everywhere because everybody went from, you know, three-yard dumpsters or whatever, that everybody shared to all these carts. And so to add another cart is just going to be like difficult. Um, but I had another question about, you know, I mentioned that uh, and I know some of the questions that were asked prior to the meeting were sent to us in email. One of those questions was, when does the enforcement actually start? And the, the answer was technically starts uh this January in twenty twenty-two. But my concern is, and I know technically, when you say technically, it doesn't, you know, I mean, you know, enforcement, like hard, you know, firm enforcement versus educational enforcement, or whatever, I know can be a very fuzzy line, but um. I mean, if Cal Waste hasn't even decided exactly how they're going to be doing this, and they're still doing that, I mean, we're, we're, we're in the middle of October right now. I mean, i- is it likely they're going to have that decided and sorted out and implemented before January one? Doesn't seem likely.
Uh, from, from my discussions with them, I think that they will have uh their methodology, you know, um, determined by then. The challenge will be potentially on, you know, you, I heard a lot in the news lately about the uh supply chain issues. And particularly as, as you kind of noted with the fourth cart, yeah, there's a space challenge probably with a lot of folks to add another cart. Um, but there's also a, a supply chain issue too, to those things, you know, if they go that route, could take months before, you know, they can, they can get their order uh filled. I know you're talking roughly seven thousand carts, so if they were to look that way, so. Um, I think that could have a big fact, you know, play a big, big role into, you know, whether or not they go with the fourth card, so. Uh, as far as enforcement, yeah. It's hard to get a good sense of, you know, how strong or not Cal Recycle is going to approach this. Um, the sense that we have is those agencies that, you know, do uh update their ordinance and, and can show, you know, substantial progress, if you will, toward compliance. Uh, you know, in, in the coming months here, I think we'll uh likely, you know, uh, get the benefit of that, the doubt, so to speak, from the state, so.
Yeah, I would hope that Cal Recycle being that that is the, going to be the enforcement arm uh initially, right, until um, you know, twenty twenty-four, when enforcement is kind of handed over to us, right? So you would, I would hope that they would factor in things like, you know, breaks out breakdowns in the supply chain and, and, and that kind of, and that kind of thing. Um, of course, we, I know you can't comment to that, but I'm just throwing that out there that they would, I would hope that would be the case. Um, our city attorney, Mr. Splendario, has his hand up. Frank, you have something?
Yes, just real quick, I'd like to add also to what Director Selling said, and um, the, the governor just signed a couple of months ago, or, or this month, actually, SB Senate Bill six nineteen, which is going to give jurisdictions a little bit of relief from strict enforcement. So if the city um basically submits a compliance plan saying the intent to get in compliance of SB thirteen eighty-three by March of twenty twenty-two, um, they will defer uh strict enforcement and penalties. So that's an additional protection um that we have. And I, I know, you know, staff's going to look at it, and if we feel like we need to avail ourselves of that, we're definitely going to do it. So it's not just, I would say, informal. I would say there are some formal protections as well that we can uh look to avail ourselves of.
Good to know, good to know. Uh, Councilman Vanderburg, you were next.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just have a couple of curiosities, really. Um, on eight sixteen uh oh five oh L, it states that the remote monitoring program shall involve installation of remote monitoring equipment. Is that we're going to be spying with cameras on garbage? Is that just in there as a precautionary, or is that an actual idea?
No, uh, some agencies are doing that, and just to uh allow for that potential, uh, should, you know, Cal Waste ever look to do that, that the ordinance uh allows for that. There are no current plans to do any monitoring, though I can tell you that right now, so.
Okay, that's good. Uh, is there, have you? Has anybody brought up the possibility that we will be producing more greenhouse gases and more harm to the environment by requiring or the necessity of a fourth cart due to increased routes or change of trucks that would cause a change in this uh, this law?
I have not heard of, of any. Um, I don't know that there's been any analysis done on that, uh, council member. I, you know, I'd be speculating, but essentially I would say that the state would likely, their response would be that it would, it would be incidental um and not significant, but uh, understand your point.
Thank you. And then just, just so it's probably, again, you know, in the public square, all of this is mandated. It's, it's really, for the most part, out of our control. We're just trying to do the best we can.
Was that a question or a statement?
That was a statement. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, just briefly, just for uh transparency purposes, I, I, I feel the need to, to make this statement that back, I believe in the March meeting, we as a council or, or council members were asking why we need to do this so quickly. And so um, just know that uh, things will come up that will delay the enforcement piece of this. But I think we've, we have pushed this uh as far out as we can, and we'll just take advantage of those supply chain issues and all of those other things. But, but, but honestly, it wasn't but six months ago, we were asking to push this, this thing out further. So um, you know, uh, you know, it is what it is, but let's, I, I think we, I think there's some things in the environment that are happening now that will, will help us uh in the long run.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I believe, uh, thank you for uh Mr. Selling bringing that detail, not one time, three, three, four times. Uh, this is state mandate. Uh, my only question is on that, can you a little bit explain more self hauling? Uh, how it to work, and it just only organic waste, or you can have a apply for self hauling for everything, like a recycle or?
Yes, uh, so while this is speaking specifically to organic self hauling, so if you had a business, um, you know, possibly a restaurant, but I would say more likely like a grocery store or something like that, that has spoiled produce or whatnot, uh, that, you know, they may have an arrangement uh to, to haul it to, you know, a farmer that has uh, you know, pigs or something like that. I don't, I don't know. This is just me kind of making this up on the fly, but um, but yeah, where they could, where they could demonstrate that, look, they've hauled those organics uh to, you know, a place where they're, they're being used, they're not being landfilled. Uh, uh, you know, or, or sometimes, you know, it gets made into pet food and, and whatnot is, is my limited understanding. Um, so if they can demonstrate that, uh, that will qualify as self haul, self hauling. Uh, I believe that the um, the ordinance, I'd have to double check it. I believe that the ordinance does allow for um some recycling uh self hauling as well. Um, in, in the same vein, if, if, and the example that comes to my mind, which is actually a variation of self hauling called back hauling, but like cardinal glass. So they have a lot of broken glass cullet uh that basically gets uh somehow uh, you know, transported back to one of their actual factories where the glass is made. Uh, so they, you know, they would be a, a good example, I guess, of, of recycling uh self hauling or back hauling, so.
Thank you. Uh, my other question. Uh, Mr. Selling, my other question is, you know, there is some kind of little bit bell going to increase, right? It's already in twenty eighteen uh agreement, right? And when these bell going to factor, if we're going to delay, it can be affecting on a delay date, or is it January first twenty twenty-two?
So they, and, and that, uh, not to guess, get into the potential next item again, but that would be one of the things that we would be working on with Cal Waste as to what the rates would be. The current uh franchise agreement already has uh organics recycling rates for commercial. It does not for residential, uh, so that will need to be determined. And of course, they wouldn't charge it until they actually can provide the service, so um, you know, and if that's weeks or hopefully not terribly long into next year. Um, but uh, you know, uh, they wouldn't be able to charge it until they provide the service. I don't have a good sense of what that is now. I can tell you it is going to be pricey, though. Uh, unfortunately, there aren't very many facilities where you can take these organics uh materials to either be in kind of a cogent plant, uh, where it's, you know, essentially incinerated for energy. Uh, or, you know, turning it into pet food and, and other potential uh alternatives. Um, uh, so it is expensive. And the other thing too with that is Galt is unfortunately not near any of these facilities. A lot of them are in the Bay Area or even up north. Uh, so they're, they're hauling this stuff, you know, fifty, seventy, eighty miles uh for the most part uh to, uh, to take it to one of these facilities. So there's additional hauling costs too that bumps it up for us, unfortunately.
Thank you, thank you.
Mike, I was under the impression that Cal Waste had been discussing about their digester, some kind of apparatus that they had or wanted to have. Is that not what you're referring to, where the organic waste would have to be hauled to?
So, yes, uh, and, and I mean, that's another piece of the puzzle that you're touching on, Mayor, is uh Cal Waste has, has said if they could cite a transfer station facility, uh, you know, in, in the general area, then uh, then they would, they would like to put in a digester, an anaerobic digester. Um, and uh, and then obviously, if, you know, if that were the case, being, you know, in close proximity to Galt, you wouldn't have the hauling costs, uh, you know, so it would reduce those costs. There is the capital cost of the digester itself. There's time to permit it and everything. So that would be something that, you know, if, even if all the ducks lined up, so to speak, you're probably looking at a minimum of three years out, I would say.
Okay, so that leaves me my next question, whereas um, we're talking about, you know, enforcement starting roughly January, maybe March, whatever. Um, you know, us forming an ad hoc committee to work with Cal Waste on what those rates are going to be, et cetera, et cetera, all preceding this, this, this program. Um, we still have this, this possible deal with Cal Waste up in the air. I want to know what's the timeline on that, because it seems to me that if these two council members, whoever they are, are part of an ad hoc committee to help negotiate this, that that piece is going to be a critical piece of that puzzle. That piece is going to very well have an effect on what those rates could be or will be, and I think they're intertwined together. So I feel like they have to be hand in hand. So does anybody want to comment on that? Maybe you or the city manager, or I don't know who's best to answer that question.
Yeah, I'll start if he wants to jump in. Uh, what I would say is realistically, you're, you're correct. I mean, there's just time involved. Uh, you know, even if a deal can be struck relatively quickly, they're still going to have to start taking this material somewhere come next year. Uh, and so I would say that there's going to be a rate for that, uh, you know, whatever that process is, whatever that looks like until such time as, you know, uh, if their facility's online and, and, you know, and, and they're going to be able to to utilize it for such. So then there would be a, a, a different rate, or, you know, I would say a re opener on the contract or, or whatnot um at that point in time. But I think you're looking at an initial rate, and then hopefully it's going to drop if that, you know, all uh comes to pass, so.
And that make, and that makes sense. Um, I was just saying, I was more, and I, I know it would take time to implement. I was just more looking for like, you know, it's going to be really hard to nail down a rate if they aren't given, if, if the council is not, you know, able to solidify uh, a proposed deal with them on a transfer station, you know, theoretically. Um, if we're not able to pin that down, I mean, I don't see how they're going to be willing to concede a certain rate, or we're going to be able to negotiate the best rate for the city, for the, for the residents of this town, if we're not able to give, there's not some kind of give and take, right? Mr. Heinz?
Oh, I agree. I agree. And this is just, this is going to be a negotiation, but I concur um with Director Selling, and we're just going to have to have the conversation with them and um, and I think the, sort of the expectation is if this, if this um operation comes on. And I think the sort of the expectation is if this, if this, um, operation comes online, we're going to want to see what the impact. On their operational expenses are going to be.
Okay. Well, I think that, that wraps up my questions. Like I said, I just, I just feel like really. I, I just can foresee Cal Waste just saying, well, what about this transfer? What about this? Cause I mean, they're not gonna, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to drive a bar, a bargain when there's an unknown. I mean, they, they might be skeptical that that's even going to go through. They're, they're really gun shy, I think, at this point. Based on the history of them trying to get such a facility in town in the past. I think this, this shot now is probably the best, the best shot they've had ever, but nothing's a done deal, right? I mean, the council hasn't proved it. Um, we don't know, and that unknown is going to be a big dark cloud looming over. I mean, it's almost like we end, we may end up having to strike a deal, like a short term deal on what these rates are going to be and to revisit them in six months or one year. Based on if these negotiations for a proposed facility are not nailed down, like, I don't know. I'm just throwing out my thoughts.
Mi- Mr. Mayor, you're already developing deal points. Very good. You're already developing them. So, thank you.
Any comments on this item, um, before we move on to the kind of the second piece of this? All right, so this is a, you know, read by title only. So my understanding that this is going, that this solid waste ordinance amendment is going to come back on consent next meeting is, is that my understanding or soon?
Yes, that's, that's correct. It would be the next meeting. It would be on consent.
Okay. All right, um, do we have any public comment on this particular item?
Rose. I have no hands raised online.
Okay, so if you are watching online, you would like to comment on this particular item or on the next item for that matter. Uh, for a warning, you can, uh, raise your hand on Zoom or you can press star nine if you're on the phone. And that will raise your hand. We will call on you. So I'll give you a few moments to raise your hand or, or, uh. Get your hand raised on the phone if you would like to do so before we move on. Again, this item will be on our consent calendar next meeting in two weeks, so there will be an opportunity to speak on it then. Before it is, uh, goes through its final approval with the consent calendar. All right, no, no comments, no hands?
No hands raised.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Selling for that. We'll move on. Our next item is going to be H four, which is the formation of a solid waste ad hoc committee and the appointment of two members. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so I believe it was at the, um, uh.
Yep.
Sorry, did you say something?
Um, in the past, we've always done a, uh, motion for.
Yeah, sorry. I was trying to unmute my phone and, uh, when you need to rapid fire, I would not make a good pilot. Um, but, um, yes, we're need a motion on that because that is to introduce the title, the ordinance by title only. And to waive the first reading and we have to do that, uh, per the, per state law.
Okay, I apologize. I was thinking something like that, but, um, all right. So I'm going to need a motion to introduce read by title only and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending. Chapter eight point one six of the Galt Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste Collection. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Approved five to zero. Now we will move on to the item H four, the formation of solid waste ad hoc committee and appointment of two council members. Mr. Selling.
Yeah, uh, so maybe just quickly back on September twenty first, uh, Cal Waste made a presentation. And, uh, through the discussion that followed that presentation, uh, they, there was, uh. Uh, I guess the suggestion of a potential ad hoc committee to address a few items that are going to be, uh, tied into. Uh, complying with these mandates and, uh, from that discussion, I think the city attorney recommended that we bring an item back. Uh, to the council to consider, uh, forming an ad hoc committee composed of two, uh, council members. And, uh, which would be supported by the city manager, the city attorney and myself. Um, the, I guess, major, I guess, uh, work items, uh, that this ad hoc committee would be tasked with. Would be, uh, amending the current franchise agreement to include a residential organics recycling rate. Uh, to review the commercial, uh, organics recycling rates as they were set back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Uh, and, and speculative, I guess you could say at that time. Uh, now that we know what the costs are, or at least Cal Waste has a better understanding of the costs. So that would be a piece of it. The issue of the, uh, potential for a transfer station, uh, to be, uh, considered. And, um, and I think lastly, there was the, um. The original agreement, uh, identified that there would be a review of the, um, of the rates. Uh, after three years and what, um, Cal Waste has indicated is there are some savings due to a lack of. Of, uh, downward migration, if you will, amongst the, the residential accounts. Uh, so there's some, there's some funds there that could be potentially used to rebalance, uh, the rates. So those are the items, the major items of, of work that the ad hoc committee would be tasked with over the coming months. And that concludes my comments.
Definitely some very dicey stuff and, uh. It's nothing to be taken lightly. So the question is, who wants to get in the trenches? I, I, I think I just want to put two cents, and I know that I mentioned, threw some names out there last time. Um, a- again, any two of us, you know, would be sufficient to probably handle this task. I, I would like to emphasize just because of what happened with the last garbage contract. It would probably be, I'm not saying it required, but I would like to see at least. Myself or Paul is one of the two members only because we're, you know, we're brick and mortar business owners here. And I feel that in, you know, obviously both being chamber members, I mean, there's others, you know, I know Mr. Lozano is also a chamber member, I think. Um, but, uh, just to, to, to give sufficient representation and be kind of a liaison on behalf of the chamber and those businesses. In, in this process too, I think it's important, uh, because of what happened last time. So I'm only throwing that out there. I'm not saying that if Paul or I are not one of the two that I'm going to like throw up my hands in protest. I'm just only, it's only a suggestion.
Man. Mr. Mayor, have you seen something? Uh, you know, I, I don't have a problem and, uh, you, I, I believe I was not in the me, last meeting, but you mentioned. Uh, Mr. Farmer and, uh, Mr. Let's, Rachel Lozano, if you guys are available, and I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Lozano, you have your hand up, your thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would be, uh, interested in doing that. I think it's, uh, uh, you know, we, I think. All of us really have a lot of background on it, but, but certainly, um, from the beginning, um. Uh, I, I think I could put, I could offer some opportunity there.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, be good, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, uh. I, I would, I'd be willing reluctantly. I know this is going to be, this is going to be a difficult task. It's going to be very, very tough and it's not going to. It's not going to be easy, um, but I, I would definitely, you know, do it on behalf of the council with Mr. Lozano. And hopefully we can come out of that with, uh, the minimal bumps and bruises as possible, I think, um, for the city. So if, uh, Mr. Lozano is okay with that, I would like to offer my service and he is consented that he would like to offer his. So if, um. We need a motion for that or what are we, what are we looking for here, Frank?
Yes, a motion.
All right, so can I have a motion to appoint, uh, myself, Mayor Farmer and Councilmember Lozano to the. Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee.
Unmoved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu. Seconded. Papinow, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. All right, thank you, Mike. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any hands raised online.
Probably should ask for a public comment prior. But I didn't hear Frank speak up, so.
Yes, you should. I, I apologize.
Well, we'll go in here commenting. If there's a comment, then if we have to redo our, we can do the redo though. Do we, I'll give a few moments for anybody listening, uh, to raise your hand on Zoom or you can press star nine if you're on the phone and you can comment. On this particular item, we are talking about the formation of the solid waste ad hoc committee, appointment of two council members. It's being suggested that myself and Councilman Lozano are the appointees. Give a few moments for any comment? No hands raised online, Rose?
No hands raised online.
All right, are we good, Frank, or do we need to revote? Mr. Splendario.
You're, 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 you're good to go, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Uh, we will now move on to our, uh, next item, item I, communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
And not this evening.
Okay. Uh, next item J, City Clerk's Report. First item, first and only item is going to be the Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee Appointment. You know?
Okay, so the recommendation is to review the applications and consider appointments to the two vacant positions on the Measure R. Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. The Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee has two vacancies appointed by the entire city council. With both terms ending April twenty twenty four. Galt Municipal Code Section three point four zero. Point one five zero states, no committee member may serve more than two consecutive three-year terms. Kamalani Martin was appointed on May fifteenth, twenty eighteen and chose not to reapply. And Tony Laura was appointed on June sixteenth, twenty twenty, and he gave his resignation on January eleventh, twenty twenty one. The city clerk's office has been advertising the vacancies on the city's website and social media. We have received three applications that have been received by Richard Hartley, Linda Clendenin. And James Conick, and each applicant meets the required qualifications. They have been invited to attend the meeting. I'm not sure if they're on the line, if you have questions. But again, it is an entire city council appointment for two vacancies.
Okay, do we have either, do we have any of the three applicants online?
No, we do not.
Okay. Does any of the council, uh, have any questions before we? Or comments? Well, I can start it off. I, I, I did review the three applicants. Um, I first want to thank the three of them for applying. Um, I think, uh, anytime you have a citizen willing to get involved and be a part of. Workings of the city and, and volunteer for such a thing, especially Measure R, which is a very, very important, uh, committee. Um, can't over, can't understate that. Um, so, um, I was very pleased with the applicants, um. I personally, uh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to let Mr. Lozano, uh, you have a comment before I.
Yeah, yes, I just want to comment that I, I personally know Linda and I think she would be an awesome choice. Uh, for this, for this position, um, I spoke to her at, at great length about it over time and I think she would be awesome.
Mr. Sandu.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to recommend James Connick, uh, on this committee. Uh, he did a lot of work for this, uh, uh, you know, voluntary work for this city. Thank you.
Does the, uh, Councilman Vandenberg or Councilman Papinow have any thoughts on the applicants? No?
Uh, both of the two mentioned, I. And, uh, there, uh, certainly Mr. Connick's, uh, experience with Measure R, um, has a tremendous knowledge. And I think a fair mind about it, um, as well as having spoken with, uh, Ms. Clendenin several times, I'd be, uh. Fully in favor of both of those people.
Okay. Well, I, I was actually, uh, very impressed with Mr. Hartley's application as well. He seemed to have some, uh, experience in, in the law enforcement realm, among other things. Uh, very extensive application, so I know it's a tough decision. We only have three spots and two applicant, I mean, we have two spots and three applicants. Um, so, you know, any of the three, any of the two of the three would be, would probably be a very good choice. Uh, it's very difficult, so, I mean, at this point. Someone wants to make a motion. To select, uh, appoint two members.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, just make sure you go to public comment before, before vote.
Yes. All right, if you are listening and you want to make a public comment, please do so now. You can raise your hand online, Zoom. Or you can press star nine if you're on the phone and that will raise your hand and we will call on you. They'll give everybody about a minute before, uh, to have a chance to do that before we. Make a selection. Again, for those of you watching, we are discussing the appointments to the Measure R Oversight Committee. Uh, we have three applicants, so we have two positions open. All right, give a few more seconds here.
We have no ra- no hands raised online.
Okay. I'm going to close the public comment time period now, so raise your hand now. Nothing, Rose?
Nothing.
All right, the comment is not closed on this item. Rich.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to appoint, uh, Linda Clendenin. And James, uh, Jim Conick to the Measure R Committee.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I second that.
Seconded by council, uh, motion made by, uh, Councilman Lozano to appoint Mr. Conick. And I'm apologizing for, what was her last name? How do you pronounce it?
Linda Clendenin. I'm, I apologize, Linda Clendenin.
I did it. I know, that's why I didn't want to get it wrong and butcher it up. Uh, Ms. Clendenin and, uh, this, Mr. Conick, and seconded by Councilman Vandenberg. Uh, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye, appointments approved, uh, five to zero. And for Mr. Hartley, if you are watching this or what in the future, I don't want to discourage you from reapplying. We have openings that do come up and we would be happy to have you aboard if the time should, uh, propose itself. So thank you for your application, sir. All right, without further ado, we will move on to our last item K, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz.
Yes, um, I, I, um, don't have any comments other than I really appreciated the conversation tonight about Corelli. And I think we made some good progress. Um, I'm going to, uh, start with City Attorney Frank Splendario. Uh, Frank, I believe you're on mute. Either you're very quiet tonight.
I'm sorry. Good evening. I have, uh, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Nothing to report out tonight.
All right, very good. Let's go with, uh, Park, uh, Parks and Recreation Director, Armando Solis.
Yes, uh, can I get shared screen, please?
Yep, give me just one moment. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to go, everybody can see the screen?
Yes.
All right, uh, just wanted to go over an event that we had this weekend. Very proud of our staff. Uh, was a huge success. Our harvest, uh, market, um, down on Forest Street Promenade and our, uh, scarecrow stroll. There's a couple of pictures of the scarecrows and as you can see in that middle picture, how busy it was. I just want to give a shout out to Jackie, uh, for doing it, an incredible job and Chelsea, so, um. Wanted to give them a shout out. Uh, events coming up, we have our spookish, spookishly fun movie night. That'll be this Friday. Our conti- our contingency is to go into Littleton if it rains, so we will have this rain or shine. Then, uh, starting next week, the Great Galt Pumpkin Hunt starts. We are still accepting registrations. Uh, it's currently with a late fee, uh, through the twenty fifth. So if people want to register, uh, appreciate that. And I want to make sure you guys save the date, uh, this. And I want to make sure you guys save the date. Uh this year, we plan on having the lighting of the night event. There there will be some modifications. Uh there there will be a parade. We are not going to have all the indoor events. We will have some uh choirs out by the tree. So I hope you guys save the date for that. And I want to thank uh Armando Morales and his landscape crew. They're starting to do a lot of trimming around the city, so and they're continuing to do good work. That's it for me.
Alrighty. Thank you, Director Solis. Let's go with Chief of Police, Brian Kalanowski. Brian, you're on mute.
You would think I was paying attention tonight and keep myself off mute when I'm supposed to. Um good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just have one brief item from the department. Next Thursday at three P M. We'll be doing a swearing in um ceremony for new employees and those recently promoted. Um uh including myself, but we've had some professional staff that. Have been elevated in the organization, and we want to recognize their promotions also. So we'll be recognizing two of our newest officers. One of our newest dispatchers, and then a handful of other folks. And that again will be next Thursday um at three P M, the twenty eighth of October, in front of the police department. Similar to what we did last time, uh four or five months ago. Um it was a good success. We we try to schedule those on a training day when we have most of the staff in or about the building. So um we invite uh the public and obviously council and staff um that are available to come on down, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
If, when was that again? I'm sorry, what was the date on that?
Uh Thursday, October twenty eighth, three P M at the PD.
Thursday, twenty eighth at three P M. Okay, thank you.
And Mister Mayor, if you'd like, we can send out a reminder to council.
Good, yes.
Okay, Tina Rose, can you?
Yep.
Happen?
Will do that.
Alrighty, thank you so much. And uh let's go with uh community, oh well, Stephanie Van Stein, our Human Resources Director just popped on, so let's go with her.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Some of our current job opportunities, we have quite a few uh part-time temporary positions open in our Parks and Recreation Department. Um we are recruiting for a sports official, and that's for youth basketball. We have an office assistant, one opening. Uh parks worker, one parks worker, two. Um also our recreation workers for uh sports and aces and soar. Um and then for full-time openings, we are still recruiting for police officers. So if you know anyone that's interested, uh please direct them to our H R website.
Thank you, Director Van Stein. Um let's go with Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Hello, Mayor members of the council. Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Alright, I know the council is probably missing all of those community development issues that that popped up over the last few months, so we'll do what we can to get. Get some items back on the agenda for them, because I I'm seeing sad faces all around the the meeting, so.
No one looks that sad to me.
Very good, very good. Uh Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Uh thank you, City Manager. Uh yeah, just real quick, um the Metaview uh project, uh resurfacing project's gonna be starting, I think, next week. Uh weather permitting, so um I'm sure those residents will be looking forward to uh to their new street coming up. And then I just wanted to express uh our appreciation uh for Armando and his uh. His parks crew for clearing the vegetation out there uh near Vauxhall and and Correlian and some of the other locations too. Uh they're definitely uh greatly appreciated in their efforts in in helping to improve traffic safety out on the Correlian Quarter, so thanks.
Alright, very good, very good. Thank you, Director Selling. Uh City Clerk Tina Hubert?
Nothing further.
Alright, E- Executive Assistant uh Rose Rodacker?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Alright, Mister Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to comments by city council members and future agenda items. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mister Sandu.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh good evening, everybody again. Uh first of all, I would like to thank you all the staff doing us a good report, giving us a detailed report. Uh thank you for all this staff. Thank you especially. Thank you for the city manager. And I would like to also thank you all the public comments regarding Correlian Boulevard. Or some other uh regarding that mask mandate uh in in school. I'd like to also thank you all my uh, all my city council, as you know, take a time to. Take the comment, and we try to communicate each other. And the next agenda item is uh, I I believe on September twenty first, I unfortunately, I missed the meeting. Cart Market Weekend Operation feasibility study. If somebody from mayor or city manager just can explain what we did on that, did we take any action or bringing the next agenda item, could you please?
Well, um uh Vice Mayor, if you like, I can chat about it, chat about it with you offline, or we can, I can give you a quick summary now.
If you can a quick summary, uh.
Okay.
Like a very brief.
So we had a, we pretty, we had a pretty lively discussion about weekend operation hours. Um I think the the council's consensus was that um the the item needed more discussion. Um and that it would come back in a future agenda when all five of you were present. Um there was a conversation about opening up the market um during the weekend at the, at the level of the Tuesday, Wednesday markets. Versus perhaps um coming up with some level of pilot, small steps. Uh to see if we can gauge vendor and public interest uh toward moving to um and and competing or participating in the market. So we have to continue that discussion. Um I, again, I can give you more details offline. And uh the meeting was recorded, but in summary, that's where we are. And so we just need further discussion on moving forward. I, as I said in the 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 um, the meeting, um we did an analysis, we chatted with vendors, we chatted with the public. Um I think the seeds of success are there. It's how we sow them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Papino? Uh thanks to everybody for the input and conversation, and I feel like we. Made some pretty good progress on this uh traffic stuff uh tonight and this month. And then uh regarding the mask thing, uh my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is we'll be getting uh a report back. After Mister Solis has his meeting with his counterparts. Um so if that's the case, I don't believe I need to ask for. Uh anybody to join me in putting an item on the agenda to talk about that. Is that correct?
Yes, and and also Councilmember Papino, I'll be reaching out to um. The Chief Health Office Officer um in the county to see if I could speak with her or one of her staff about the mask mandate and some of the confusion. Around that as well, so we'll not only get uh some input from Director Solis and his count and his um. Um his um peers around the region, but we'll also reach out to the leadership of the council. And we may reach out to Supervisor Nattoli as well and get his thoughts on things.
Okay.
Okay.
So ahead. Alright. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh thank you, staff, for the reports, and and thank you for putting up with all of our questions and and long-winded debates. Uh I found it quite informative. Uh so thank you for all the information. I had the opportunity to go to the um fundraiser for the Greewall family at uh Brewster's and speak with the family for a moment, and uh they wanted to express. To uh the entire city. Um how much love they felt from the community. Um they really appreciated it, and so all the outpouring of support did make a difference. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh for me, um I wanted to mention, because I I totally forgotten in the beginning, and I apologize to my fellow safety committee members and to the chief and to the lieutenant, everybody was there last night, but we actually had a safety meeting last night. It was a very good meeting, um very lengthy. Uh we discussed um some things such as the West Nile uh. Mosquito activity in the area with concerns and regarding West Nile and and how the city's been proactive in that. And we discussed um uh a couple other really important items, um vaping issues at the schools and specifically. Uh it's kind of becoming a little bit of an epidemic. Um and there's people selling vape products to schools, so. Uh it would, we had a very good discussion about it. I think we came up with a little bit of a plan about how we can um. Have our SROs work with the school district about coming up with maybe some education at the school uh and and uh, you know, uh. Help, help the school district in any way we can to try to get education out there. Um so it was a very eye-opening. Uh then we had a discussion about a new system that was presented by our Officer Little. Uh very interesting discussion about a new camera system that's looking to be deployed in the city of Galt. Should the council approve such a thing? Uh I don't want to get into the details of it, but I, it could be a game changer when it comes to solving crime and especially petty crimes such as vehicle theft. Uh catalytic converter theft, that kind of thing that that has plagued our community for a long time. So um I'm excited to see that item come forward to the council. I know uh Councilman Vandenberg, or Councilman Lozano was present, and of course Vice Mayor was present, so three of us were able to see that. Um and like I said, I look forward to seeing that brought back. Um I think uh I would very much be in favor of something like that. Um and like to hear more about it, so. Um other things, I just want to thank PD for the enforcement. Again, awesome, uh you know, seeing our traffic officer out there, I want to thank the PD personally. I got a very. Uh very. Um thankful message, I guess you'd call it, from um our resident on Crow Creek Drive that was visited by our um motor officer, and he was very pleased with finally getting. Um you know, some of his concerns that uh being addressed uh with the radar trailer out there, and Officer Steele spoke with him about, you know, uh the areas. So thank you for that. Uh thank you, Officer Steele. And uh all the enforcement you guys are doing, the education, the social media, all of it. Um very happy with it. And look forward to uh seeing it continue, especially on Correlian Boulevard. Uh so last but not least, uh we got an email, the council did, about the teen center has gonna have their grand opening. On October twenty first at two thirty. They've been very active, that group, and it's gonna be at five fifty C Street and the old uh building under the water tower. So if any of the citizens want to, want to come, or uh the council, it's October twenty first at two thirty P M. And other than that, um. I just want to make mention of Officer Herrera uh still being in our thoughts uh as she still recovers from her injuries. So I want to uh uh make mention of her and her family. We're thinking about them. And it's good to have the Vice Mayor back for uh, you know, being overseas, and we missed you a couple meetings. And uh it's good to have you back, so condolences again. So that would be, uh Mister Lozano, you have your hand up before I close out?
Yeah, I don't have really anything other than just to thank staff and then um uh for everything they did. I I also appreciate all the citizen's support. Um you know, throughout the year, but but certainly uh when issues pop up. Um you know, calling in and and voicing their concerns and and uh we certainly all take that to heart. Um and then just one last thing, uh as it relates to the vaping and um. The drug use is the other thing that was mentioned. Um it looks like that uh one extra point was is that there's gonna be some work done between with. In conjunction with the school district and police department uh to put in detectors that would detect for vaping and things like that. Um as the mayor mentioned. The person that was talking about it, uh you know, said that that uh, you know, these otherwise uh. Uh legal substances that adults use um and have access to are being sold to kids and. And it's a be, it's getting to be a a real problem on campus, so um I'm glad we can partner with the school district and. And uh come up with some solutions on how to fight this. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Alright, I I totally apologize, Rich. I didn't even realize that I skipped right over. I was reading some notes and I thought I went through everybody, so my apologies.
Oh, good. I felt like the mayor for like two seconds there.
Yeah, just don't, I mean, you should have just been like, hey, excuse me, you know, I mean, you had your hand up, but I I apologize. My my bad. So um yeah, so with that, we will wrap up, and uh we will adjourn the meeting at nine forty-five P M. Everybody have a good evening and have a safe week. Thank you.